Welcome to City Hall, everybody. Good morning again. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, May 26, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grill, Han, Labange, Dodomaszkowski Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viaragosa, Weiss, Sainpa Dia, 11 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Viaragosa moves. Mr. Labange seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves and Mr. Sainpa seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, items noticed for public hearings, items 1, 2, 3, and 4 are ordinances and 12 council members are expected. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, before we do that, though, colleagues, I see a wonderful group of students here sitting in the front row. Any member of the council wishing to claim credit for them as constituents? Ah, why don't you go ahead and introduce, Mr. Labange?
On behalf of the great councilwoman of the 11th district, Sidney Misakowski, who just arrived, let me introduce Kentwood Elementary School to your great councilwoman, Sidney Misakowski. This is Kentwood Elementary and the whole city council. Welcome all the students.
Welcome to City Hall. Someday, some of you may be sitting around this horseshoe if we do a good job as adults. Thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, first items you mentioned were items 1, 2, 3, and 4. I do have, we do have 12 members present now, so we can consider these items. Colleagues, I have a card on item number 1 that's called a special. On items 2, 3, and 4, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed on items 2, 3, and 4. Any requests for specials? 2, 3, or 4? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 5 is also a public hearing, item number, it's a public convenience necessity in council District 12.
Okay, we do have a card on item number 5 that's called that special. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 6 through 22, items 9, 10, 11, 12, reports have been submitted on those items.
Okay, members, items 6 through 22 now before us, public hearings have been held. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Let me take requests for specials, beginning with Mr. Viaragosa.
Item 15.
15, call special for Mr. Viaragosa. Mr. Labange?
Item number 6.
6, call special by Mr. Labange.
And also request that item 8 be continued to June 16.
Members, request to continue item 8 for just more than three weeks from now, June 18th, without objection. Ms. Han?
Yeah, I'd like to call item 10, item 11, special.
Item 10 and 11, call special by Ms. Han. Mr. Sainpa?
I was gonna call it special, but continuation's fine.
Okay, and unless there's an objection, colleagues, I'd like to call item 7 and 9 special and hold 12 on the desk for Mr. Cardenas as well. 15, I believe, has been called special. Any other specials? Seeing none, on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 22 through 39, 10 votes are required for consideration.
23 through 39 now before us, without objection. Members, these items have not had public hearings. I have one card on item 27, we'll call that special for members of the public. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Request for specials, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, thank you, Council President, items 29 and 30, I would just like to remand them back to the Housing Department.
Any objection, members, to refer item 29 and 30 back to the Housing Department? Seeing no objection, those items are so referred. Mr. Smith?
32.
32, call special by Mr. Smith. Any other specials? Seeing none, on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please, before we open the roll, request to continue item 31 for how much time, Mr. Garcetti?
Indefinitely, I know, but the new date that, for one month.
For 30 days. Item 31 to be continued for 30 days, new hearing date would be June 25th. Seeing no objection, item 31 is continued. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, on our closed session, items 40 and 41.
Let's hold all closed session matters on the desk. And Madam Clerk, is that the end of our regular meeting agenda?
Yes, that is.
Okay, before getting to items called special, colleagues, I'd like to ask for your indulgence in taking one item out of order. Item 7 has been called special. It's a matter pertaining to state legislation, and we do have an author of Assembly Bill, forgetting the number here, Assembly Bill 2997, Assembly Member Marco Fireball, part of our delegation who's here, and if we can afford him a few minutes to speak on the matter, Mr. Fireball.
Thank you, President. Padilla, thank you to friends on the city council, I appreciate your indulgence. I joined you this morning to urge your support for the motion before the council today in support of Assembly Bill 2997. The measure is the farthest-reaching and most aggressive public health measure in the nation, aimed at protecting our youngest children from the harmful effects of exposure to secondhand smoke. The bill friends would outlaw smoking in a vehicle when there are children present. The California law today requires that children who ride in vehicles must be in a car seat if they are ages zero to six or less than 60 pounds. It means that they are the youngest and most vulnerable children. This measure would outlaw smoking when such a child is present in the car. The evidence regarding the impact of secondhand smoke is comprehensive, it's overwhelming, and it's irrefutable. The fact is that secondhand smoke is a Class A carcinogen, there is no known safe exposure to humans, and it kills. We just heard this morning that a recent study done by the Journal on Pediatrics found that secondhand smoke is a leading killer of kids from unintentional causes. That means that all the hit-and-runs, all of car crashes, all the drownings, all the accidental shootings, all of these things combined kill fewer children than does secondhand smoke. And so I'm before you today urging you to join a broad alliance of public health organizations in support of this measure, and I urge you to send a message to the California Legislature much like you sent a message across the state and across the country when you banned smoking in beaches. We care about the public health of Californians, we know that secondhand smoke kills, and the responsible thing to do is to support measures like this. Let me just tell you that the broad coalition of health organizations that support this measure include the American Cancer Society, the American Lung Association, the American Heart Association, the California Tobacco Control Alliance, Children's Advocacy Institute, the Keck School of Medicine at USC, and Kaiser Permanente, among others. So you'd be in great company in support of this measure. I would ask for your help in sending a message to the legislature that we have to put an end to this bad conduct. Thank you very much, Council President Padilla, and thank you to the members of the city council for your support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fireball. Thank you for your leadership on this. Our speaker queue starts with Mr. Padilla, sponsor of this, then Mr. Viaragosa, then Ms. Grill, and then Mr. Reyes. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and colleagues, I really want to thank for his leadership, Assembly Member Fireball, and thank him for being here today. As you all know, the legislature is in session, so he's made some special arrangements to be here for our vote and to call attention to this bill that comes before the full assembly for a vote tomorrow morning. So our casting of vote in support of his legislation couldn't come at a better time. Although Mr. Fireball did a tremendous job of articulating the merits of his legislation, colleagues, I just want to remind us that this is only the latest in a long string of efforts that the city of Los Angeles specifically has taken to counter the ill effects caused by smoking and secondhand smoke for our residents and as the biggest city in the state of California on behalf of all Californians. It's only been a couple of years since the city of Los Angeles took a big step in banning self-service displays for tobacco sales within city limits and in turn required vendor-assisted sales so that we could minimize the illegal sale of tobaccos to young people. We also took, just a few years ago, a big step, one of the few cities in the country taking the step of requiring establishments that sell tobacco products to register with the city of Los Angeles, because a lot of people say, "Why do you need more laws? Just enforce those that are on the books." Requiring tobacco-selling establishments to register with the city. So we have an official log of who is allowed to sell tobacco and who doesn't register to sell tobacco, and therefore we can begin with our enforcement was a big, big step. And just a few weeks ago, I believe it was Council Member Weiss and several of you around this horseshoe who spearheaded the effort to ban smoking on most of Los Angeles's beaches. Again, part of our ongoing effort to minimize the effects of tobacco, illegal tobacco sales, tobacco use, and the consequences of tobacco. And so here, we're asking for support of a very important bill in Sacramento that would ban the smoking of tobacco by adults when there are children present in the car. And I can't emphasize this enough, the specific category of children we're talking about are the same requirements where we ask for children to be placed in car seats, children six and younger, 60 pounds and lighter. But colleagues, catch the visual, we go through all this to try to ensure the protection of our small kids, of our children, by requiring that they be placed in car seats. Yet current law allows for that same child that's restrained in a car seat for their protection to be a victim, to be a prisoner of secondhand smoke that's being emanated in that same vehicle. Colleagues, I think the argument makes itself, we should ban smoking by adults in vehicles where these young children are present. That's what this bill's called for, it's consistent with the city's leadership on this issue, and I ask for your support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Viaragosa?
Yes.
After that, we'll get to the introduction, sorry. Okay, Mr. --
Item sixty-two twenty-two now before us. Public hearings have been held. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Let me take requests for specials, beginning with Mr. Varragosa.
Item fifteen.
Fifteen called special for Mr. Varragosa. Mr. Labange.
Item number six.
Six called special by Mr. Labange.
And also request that item eight be continued to June sixteenth.
Members, request to continue item eight for just more than three weeks from now, June eighteenth, without objection. Ms. Hahn.
Yeah, I'd like to call item ten, item eleven special.
Item ten and eleven called special by Ms. Hahn. Mr. Zine.
I was gonna call it special, but continuation's fine.
Okay. And unless there's an objection, colleagues, I'd like to call item seven and nine special and hold twelve on the desk for Mr. Cárdenas as well. Fifteen, I believe, has been called special. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items twenty-two through thirty-nine, ten votes are required for consideration.
Twenty-three through thirty-nine now before us, without objection. Members, these items have not had public hearings. I have one card on item twenty-seven. We'll call that special for members of the public. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests for members of the public to just to counsel. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Request for specials, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Items twenty-nine and thirty, I would just like to remand them back to the Housing Department.
Any objection, members, to refer item twenty-nine and thirty back to the Housing Department? Seeing no objection, those items are so referred. Mr. Smith.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two called special by Mr. Smith. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please, before we open the roll, request to continue item thirty-one for how much time, Mrs. Garcetti? For thirty days. Item thirty-one to be continued for thirty days. New hearing date would be June twenty-fifth. Seeing no objection, item thirty-one is continued. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, on our closed session items forty and forty-one.
Let's hold all closed session matters on the desk. And Madam Clerk, is that the end of our regular meeting agenda?
Yes, that is.
Okay. Before getting to items called special, colleagues, I'd like to ask for your indulgence in taking one item out of order. Item seven has been called special. It's a matter pertaining to state legislation, and we do have an author of Assembly Bill, forgetting the number here, Assembly Bill twenty-nine ninety-seven. Assemblymember Marco Fireball, part of our delegation, who's here, and if we can afford him a few minutes to speak on the matter, Mr. Fireball.
Thank you, President Padilla. Thank you to friends on the City Council. I appreciate your indulgence. I joined you this morning to urge your support for the motion before the council today in support of Assembly Bill two-nine-nine-seven. The measure is the farthest-reaching and most aggressive public health measure in the nation, aimed at protecting our youngest children from the harmful effects of exposure to secondhand smoke. The bill, Friendswood, outlaw smoking in a vehicle when there are children present. The California law today requires that children who ride in vehicles must be in a car seat if they are ages zero to six or less than sixty pounds. It means that they are the youngest and most vulnerable children. This measure would outlaw smoking when such a child is present in the car. The evidence regarding the impact of secondhand smoke is comprehensive, it's overwhelming, and it's irrefutable. The fact is that secondhand smoke is a Class A carcinogen. There is no known safe exposure to humans, and it kills. We just heard this morning that a recent study done by the Journal on Pediatrics found that secondhand smoke is a leading killer of kids from unintentional causes. That means that all the hit-and-runs, all of the car crashes, all the drownings, all the accidental shootings, all of these things combined kill fewer children than does secondhand smoke. And so I'm before you today urging you to join a broad alliance of public health organizations in support of this measure, and I urge you to send a message to the California Legislature, much like you sent a message across the state and across the country when you banned smoking in beaches. We care about the public health of Californians. We know that secondhand smoke kills, and the responsible thing to do is to support measures like this. Let me just tell you that the broad coalition of health organizations that support this measure include the American Cancer Society, the American Lung Association, the American Heart Association, the California Tobacco Control Alliance, Children's Advocacy Institute, the Keck School of Medicine at USC, and Kaiser Permanente, among others. So you'd be in great company in support of this measure. I would ask for your help in sending a message to the legislature that we have to put an end to this bad conduct. Thank you very much, Council President Padilla, and thank you to the members of the City Council for your support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fireball. Thank you for your leadership on this. Our speaker queue starts with Mr. Padilla, sponsor of this, then Mr. Varragosa, then Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. Reyes. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and colleagues. I really want to thank for his leadership Assemblymember Fireball. Thank him for being here today. As you all know, the legislature is in session, so he's made some special arrangements to be here for our vote and to call attention to this bill that comes before the full assembly for a vote tomorrow morning. So our casting of vote in support of his legislation couldn't come at a better time. Although Mr. Fireball did a tremendous job of articulating the merits of his legislation, colleagues, I just want to remind us that this is only the latest in a long string of efforts that the city of Los Angeles specifically has taken to counter the ill effects caused by smoking and secondhand smoke for our residents and as the biggest city in the state of California on behalf of all Californians. It's only been a couple of years since the city of Los Angeles took a big step in banning self-service displays for tobacco sales within city limits and in turn required vendor-assisted sales so that we could minimize the illegal sale of tobaccos to young people. We also took, just a few years ago, a big step, one of the few cities in the country taking the step of requiring establishments that sell tobacco products to register with the city of Los Angeles, because a lot of people say, "Well, why do you need more laws? Just enforce those that are on the books." Requiring tobacco-selling establishments to register with the city. So we have an official log of who is allowed to sell tobacco and who doesn't register to sell tobacco, and therefore, we can begin with our enforcement was a big, big step. And just a few weeks ago, I believe it was Councilmember Weiss and several of you around this horseshoe, who spearheaded the effort to ban smoking on most of Los Angeles' beaches. Again, part of our ongoing effort to minimize the effects of tobacco, illegal tobacco sales, tobacco use, and the consequences of tobacco. And so here, we're asking for support of a very important bill in Sacramento that would ban the smoking of tobacco by adults when there are children present in the car. And I can't emphasize this enough. The specific category of children we're talking about are the same requirements where we ask for children to be placed in car seats, children six and younger, sixty pounds and lighter. But colleagues, catch the visual. We go through all this to try to ensure the protection of our small kids, of our children, by requiring that they be placed in car seats. Yet current law allows for that same child that's restrained in a car seat for their protection to be a victim, to be a prisoner of secondhand smoke that's being emanated in that same vehicle. Colleagues, I think the argument makes itself. We should ban smoking by adults in vehicles where these young children are present. That's what this bill's called for. It's consistent with the city's leadership on this issue, and I ask for your support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Varragosa.
Yes.
After that, we'll get to the introduction, sorry. Oh, okay. Mr. Zine has a quick introduction, Mr. Varragosa, just of a class, if that's all right.
Thank you, indulge. They're gonna be taking a tour, and they have to leave at ten-thirty-five. If I can please have Lockhurst Drive Elementary students, please stand, be recognized. They're here, third and fifth grade students from Lockhurst Drive Elementary School with their teacher, Lee Iceman, visiting City Hall today. We welcome you to City Hall. Enjoy the day, enjoy the opportunities, enjoy government in action. Thank you for being here, Lockhurst. Thank you.
My apologies, Mr. Zine. Mr. Varragosa.
Yes, Mr. President. Members, I want to urge your support for this measure, Assembly Bill twenty-nine ninety-seven. And I also want to thank former Majority Leader and Assemblymember Marco Fireball. You know, when California first led the way on the issue of secondhand smoke in bars and restaurants, Marco Fireball was there. And I remember back then the smokers and others making the arguments about the right to privacy and the right to smoke and the need to balance the interest of smokers with non-smokers. And what we said then was what I believe that Assemblymember Fireball is saying now, that the evidence is absolutely clear, so clear that when Assemblymember Fireball went to the Philip Morris website, Philip Morris, a corporation that for decades, along with Reynolds Companies and all the others, have been fighting the idea that smoking kills, have denied the big conspiracy, the big lie, that smoking has anything to do with side effects and public health. And now finally, they admit what the public health experts have said for decades, what all of us know to be true, and that is that smoking kills and secondhand smoking is also a killer. And so in many ways, this measure, very thoughtful measure that has no opposition, is very important. Think about this. You have a child in a car seat, but when you smoke while that child is in the car seat, it's almost as if you got that shoulder harness and wrapped it around his or her neck. A slow death, secondhand smoke, the number-one cause of death for children under five. This is a very smart measure on the part of Assemblymember Fireball. It's one that this council should endorse unanimously. It is forward-thinking. We're leading the way once again, but so it should be when we're protecting the public health and especially the public health of the children like the ones who are sitting here with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Varragosa. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And I too want to recognize Mr. Fireball for his leadership on this issue. And I grew up with a father who smoked. I was in the car for years and didn't have the option to say, "I don't want to be in that car." My mother, who went to the doctor several years ago, and the doctor said to her, "You must be a smoker." And she said, "No, I've never smoked, other than when I was eighteen years old." But because of that secondhand smoke, she has had health problems relative to that secondhand smoke by being in that car. And I know if my father had known that that kind of impact was occurring, he wouldn't have smoked in the car. But we know a lot more than we did then. And as someone who takes such great care in, and those of us that are parents and our children, to make sure that they are safe, that when they fall and scratch their head or when they reach for something they shouldn't have, that serious issue, we pay a lot of attention to. But parents are not reminding themselves that a child in a car with secondhand smoke, the danger they're putting forward by smoking in the car, is really, I think, threatening their life in the future and future problems that they will have with breathing and those that my mother has now experienced. So I want to stand and recognize the leadership of Mr. Fireball and the leadership of Council President Padilla and Mr. Weiss, Mr. Varragosa, who brought this forward, and to say, "I support this." There will be people out there who say, "We have a right to do whatever we want in our car." Well, the child doesn't have a right to say, "No," unfortunately, that they don't want you to smoke in that car. So I support this and hope that we can be one of the first in the country to make sure that we are protecting our children and our future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to join in the chorus of support for Assembly Bill two-nine-nine-seven, sponsored by Assemblymember Fireball. You know, colleagues, I have a great district. I have a district that reflects so many countries from throughout the world. It's a great district of immigrants, where quite frankly, where cigarettes are dumped into these countries, it is very common to see many young people starting to smoke throughout their lives. And these customs and traditions and norms are brought over to the city. And unfortunately, these same customs are very deadly when it comes to smoking cigarettes. And so this law will be a way in which we start enlightening, we start informing the folks who have been essentially pounded upon by the tobacco industry in these other countries, that when they come here, we do have a set of laws that protect their health. We do have a set of laws that will look out for them, at the same time, create an environment where they can become informed, become educated to the harm that's created to their children when they're smoking inside a vehicle. I would hope that in this bill, we have a way in which we can inform and educate people as to the harm that these cigarettes can cause on their children, especially if they've already been conditioned to smoke in a manner that, quite frankly, has been changing dramatically here in the United States. Another key element that sticks out in my mind is that many of the neighborhoods that have been imposed upon by freeways, all the pollution that comes from freeways is compounded by the cigarette smoking. So having these laws truly is an asset to the health issue. I'm gonna thank Assemblymember Fireball for his thoughtfulness and his proactivity, and Councilman Padilla for bringing this to the council floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Mr. Weiss, to be followed by Mr. Cárdenas.
Thank you, Mr. President and Assemblyman Fireball. Thanks for being here, and thanks for not only proposing this legislation, but for being here as part of your rollout of the legislation and for including this body in what you're doing. It's really important because the city of Los Angeles and the state of California have together been such leaders in the fight against smoking. And I'm really proud of what we did here with respect to beach smoking. That is spreading across the state, and I think that will spread even farther. What you're doing with children in cars is gonna get the attention of the nation and, I think, the world, and it is also going to spread because it makes absolutely so much sense. So thank you for doing it, and thank you for making sure that Los Angeles is an important part of building support for your proposal, because this city has done it before with restaurants, in parks, in beaches. It's gonna do it again with your leadership. Thank you, Assemblymen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. Our last speaker is Mr. Cárdenas.
Thank you very much. I just want to echo the fact of the matter that Marco Antonio Fireball, Assemblyman, this is a wonderful bill. If a person wants to smoke, that's your business. If you want to subject little children to carcinogenics, that's serious business. And the health of children is precious. That's something that we should not allow to happen if we can do something about it. And I think that this bill is very appropriate, and this bill is, in fact, good for children. I think it's good for society. This bill is something that's been long overdue, and this is a bill that does allow people to have their personal habits. The only thing that this bill says and does is if you want to have those personal habits, please don't subject little children who don't have a choice to these carcinogenics. Please do not subject them to that problem or that habit. So once again, this is a great bill, and this is something that I think the city of Los Angeles should support, and I would hope that this bill finds its way through the legislature and signed by this governor to protect children. Once again, thank you, Marco Antonio Fireball, for all your wonderful, wonderful work, and this is a great bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cárdenas. Anybody else wishing to speak? If not, we have this before, so if we can please open the roll on the item, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and that item is approved. Forthwith, all of the, all of the items today that are on positions in state legislations, if we can make those go forthwith because of the legislative calendar in Sacramento. Thank you. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there are cards on general public comment. Do you wish to take that up at this time?
Yes, why don't we take general public comment? We'll open that right now. I'd like to call forward at this time, Jesús Esparza Marcias, Elisa López López, Nadine Díaz, Luis Martínez Armento. If you can come forward, please, to the microphone for public comment at this time. And if the entire group would like to come up, we also have Candido Mendoza Santana, Luis Campa Valdez, Nelson Armando Linares, Miguel Ángel Pérez, José Andrés Maldonado Mejía, and Francisco Moreno Cárdenas. Bienvenidos.
Translation, please.
Wait one minute for our translator just to come from over here.
We're here today to ask you to please continue supporting us. We are the farmers representing Alameda and Forty-first Farming Area. We want to let you know that we need you. We're here, and we don't want to leave. We're working, and we need this land. I have four children, and my children eat from the fruit of their labor. They cut their vegetables there, and they also cut guayabas. We're asking you all to please support us, specifically the Hispanic councilmen. You are feeling what we're asking, and you're understanding what we're asking of you. That's all. Good morning. I want to tell you that we're here and we're not leaving. We want to ask you to please support us in keeping this garden. That's where we plant our vegetables, that's where we plant our fruits. We eat from the farming that takes place at this garden. What we're here to ask is to please support us. We're there, we farm there, our children farm there, they eat from the fruit of the labor that they cultivate there. We're here, we don't want to leave, and we're not leaving. We're staying at that garden, so we ask for your support. Thank you.
One more day, again. Miguel Ángel Pérez, Los Angeles Land Use Coalition, supporter of the South Central Farmers. Everybody here has to be aware that this is a daily struggle and a lifelong struggle for people here in Los Angeles. It is important for all of us to pay attention to the voice of the people who grow the food we all eat every day. All our families are nourished by that. All our people here that represent the struggle, the pains, and the hurt of the land every day. We must all pay much significance of what is being said here every time campesinos and all of us here speak our hearts and minds. Again, aquí estamos y no nos vamos. Tierra libertad. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gracias por su testimonio. This closes our public comment period. If we can move back to the regular agenda, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number one was called special for a card from the public.
Okay. Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, why don't we hear your public testimony for items one, five, and twenty-seven at this time, Ms. Hawkins? Thank you very much.
I would like to wait one at a time, please. Thank you. Item number one, again, my name is Vincent Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. As the young Mexican, young man and woman have spoken, it's concerning, who is the owner when it has been given away thirteen years ago, but now the owner is back to claim their land, but are not the true owners, that are here from overseas? I think it's very wrong for them to come here, to sue these people who have planted tomatoes and their food, and now they must go to court to protect their land.
Ms. Hawkins?
I would like to know, okay, I'm getting to something.
It's on the lighting subject right now.
I would like to know what is happening with our government also, buildings, and dealing with maintenance and cleanliness of these buildings, even though these buildings are in taxes, our S.B.O.s and mortgage costs. You can't tell if it has been illegally taken over, whether a business or a school, when the maintenance and the supplies in the stores are always out of stock. I'm very concerned concerning the welfare of this building, who is owning.
Ms. Hawkins, this is an item on lighting district at Zelzer Avenue and Longacre Avenue, so we need you to address that issue, or else wait till the next one, okay?
Okay, thank you. We're talking about maintenance and supplies.
Maintenance of the lighting district.
Of these lighting districts, which I'm very concerned of the lightning in this building and the windows, why we can't see out of the windows.
We appreciate your comments today. I'm gonna ask after you conclude right now.
Thank you.
If it's not on topic, okay, thank you. That closes public comment for item number one. If we can open the roll on the item, please. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number five is a public convenience or necessity in Council District Twelve, and a card has been submitted on that, and most of.
Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, if you'd like to come forward on item number five, and please keep your comments about the public convenience or necessity alcohol license for Smart and Final in CD Twelve.
Okay, thank you very much. I have three minutes. Thank you, Councilmen. During the worst, Hawke were four since nineteen thirty. I had to take Smart and Final to court because of their security guard, who was drunk on his job illegally. We can't at this time afford to risk our lives on alcohol and drugs because of danger zone of drinking during business hour or driving. But because of these different governments here and overseas, plus churches, leaders, owners of these liquor stores are now out of business and are right now sending poison and alcohol, and what's shown unto me through Jesus Christ, that is, it's only in bombing fluid that is in the alcohol to kill through the bother. bombing fluid that is in the alcohol to kill through the bother. And this is the only thing that is shot also during dentist, once you go to a dentist, which is called a shot that you take before you take your teeth out. It is in bombing fluid that is going into your teeth, which is a part of the tourists that's here to kill USA. They are trying to do things that are concerning the tribulation period, which is anti-Crist, where now we are seeing bodies flying in the sky. That is illegally. The tribulation period has not came.
Excuse me, Mrs. Hawkins, I think you've strayed from the topic of the discussion.
Okay, thank you very much.
We're going to have to ask you to conclude right now. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your testimony. This closes public comment on this item. If we can open the roll on this?
Mr. President, motions required. This is a public convenience or necessity in Council District 12, and a motion is required to grant the application.
Mr. Smith, a motion's required for this. So move the findings on this? Okay. Mr. Smith moves. Mr. White seconds. Please open the roll on the item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Thank you. That item is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, I'd just like to make a Channel 35 introductions and greeting. This morning, I was at Fire Station 56 this morning, and the firefighters from 50s moved into 56s, and I wanted to salute them. They had a very nice half a turkey sandwich for me, half a tuna sandwich for me on my way in, and they were getting organized for a pump test out at Injun 56. I want to just take a moment to thank the firefighters of 56s and 50s this morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. And maybe during announcements, you can let us know what you had for dinner last night, all right? Thank you, sir. Our next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number six was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange.
Ask for Mr. Reyes to speak on this item first, then I'll follow.
All right, Mr. Reyes, be followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. My request button here is a little faulty, so I appreciate that. Colleagues, a couple of years ago, when we were working with the state, we were trying to figure out a way to create a balance at the Taylor Yards, where we can have a park that every stakeholder in the area could enjoy. We found out that in the mission of the state park system, they did not have any reference to urban settings. And in working with State Assemblymember Jackie Goldberg, we found a way to promote a concept that also embraces the needs of the urban environment in as much as we need to protect our beaches, our mountains, our deserts. We found out that the state didn't have a focus on how to develop urban parks. The assumption was, since the city handles recreation parks, that's enough, that the city's role is just in the recreation facilities, and that should be enough for the city itself of Los Angeles. We beg to differ, since they have been very accommodating, very proactive, and buying land for park space. We found it very hard for the architects, for the engineers, to actually come to a page where they can all work in a manner that is harmonious, that is able to diffuse the pressures of those neighborhoods that are park poor. So now we have a historic arrangement in Taylor Yard, where 20 acres will be urban park setting, active recreation space, and 20 acres of passive space next to the Los Angeles River. But we do have other places throughout the Northeast that needs to be developed as parks. We need to promote urban park environments and define a goal and a mission, and the kind of environments that is befitting of urban parks, and we would hope the state would embrace that mission, include these elements into existing goals, and have a balanced approach in dealing with dense areas and urban settings. So I ask when I vote, and I want to thank Councilmember Labange for supporting me and supporting this bill sponsored by Jackie Goldberg, that essentially is asking for a change in this particular definition as AB 2064. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say thank you, Ed, for your fight here, and I also want to thank former councilmember, now Assemblymember Jackie Goldberg, for understanding the challenges. This is not necessarily unique to Los Angeles anymore, because the state parks go, they are building state parks in urban areas, but they must make them cater to the needs of the urban environment, where there would be sports fields, because in state parks, there's no need for sports fields. Interesting enough, this is the same problem that happened in some parts of the Santa Monica Mountains up towards Malibu, where they had Little League fields, where they had to rip them out, I believe, because they didn't, quote, "qualify." This will allow them to make sure that in our inner cities and anywhere where there's a sports field, because I like sports fields too, are important to build and be compatible with a state park. So again, I want to thank you, Ed, for your constant leadership on the Taylor Yard. I want to thank Assemblymember Antonio Villarogosa for his great leadership in bringing the bonds that brought about Taylor Yard and the cornfields, and this effort as well to change it. Without the parks, we wouldn't be good people, and we're better people because of parks, and this Assembly bill will make it a greater park once built. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, and this closes our comments for this period. If we can open the roll on the item, please. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That item is approved. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President.
You go forthwith on that, Mr. Labange. All state positions today, we will go forthwith on.
Next item was item number nine, and that was called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Okay. Item number nine, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you very much. You read my mind. I'm calling the staff forward to give us, colleagues, a brief overview and presentation on this item. This is a motion that I introduced just a few weeks ago, along with Chairman of the Commerce Committee, Councilmember Cardenas. Colleagues, the context for this goes back just a few years ago, when California was in the middle of the worst known energy crisis in the state's history. At the time, the DWP had gone from being the poster child for what not to do to the poster child of what to do in terms of securing a stable, reliable, affordable energy supply for your constituents, for your ratepayers here in the city of Los Angeles. In the midst of the energy crisis, the private sector especially was failing elsewhere in the state of California, and we were asked by state entities, by state regulators, by state leaders to be a good neighbor, and so we were. The Department of Water and Power ramped up at peak periods and fed back surplus energy into a grid to help minimize blackouts and burnouts on the word that we would be paid for it someday. Energy isn't free. We're not trying to make, we weren't trying to gouge the state of California and reap some undeserved dollars. We ramped up because we could. We fed back into the grid as a good neighbor, but unfortunately, we're still due upwards of $170 million. Part of why we haven't been paid back is the state economy. Part of why we haven't been paid back is complications at the state level with the power exchange and other entities, and a big part of why we haven't been paid back is because of what's going on in terms of lawsuits and decisions facing the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, otherwise known as FERC. And so, colleagues, I brought this motion in because it's due time that we see the dollars due Los Angeles and the ratepayers of Los Angeles come back into our coffers, and after the presentation by staff, I'll maybe ask a few questions.
Thank you, President Padilla. I am Marcia Haber-Kamine. I am Assistant City Attorney for the City of Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. In response to the difficulties in obtaining payment of the almost $170 million-plus interest that has accrued since November of 2000, on May 10th, the Department of Water and Power, through the use of the City Attorney's Office and the law firm of Van Ness Feldman, filed with FERC a motion requesting dispersal of monies owed to the city, the 160 exclusive of interest. The interest is accruing, as we speak, at the FERC rate on approximately $104 million, which is close to 18% compounded annually, and on the PX amount, about 4% annually compounded, which is about $52 million. The complications are that the refund case, the money is being held by FERC in the PX bankruptcy, approximately $1.6 billion, which would pay everybody who is owed money, in an effort to coerce settlement by the parties in relinquishing their claims of jurisdictional immunity, which we have in the refund case, and other parties to coerce them to pay over settlement amounts due from their accounts receivable, and therefore remove this case from the FERC docket. We have a tally of the number of parties who have supported and opposed our motion. There are approximately seven, including the Sacramento Municipal Utility District, that have supported our motion for dispersment of funds. The California Independent System Operator and the California Power Exchange have taken no position, but have pointed out the availability of the money, and of course, the California parties who are seeking refunds have opposed our motion. The California parties include the Energy Oversight Board, the California Public Utilities Commission, the Attorney General's Office, and the independent operators PG&E, City of the Gas and Electric, and SCE. We will continue to pursue this motion, and we are also continuing to pursue the settlement track while we're reserving our jurisdictional objections in the hope to get the funds released.
First question. So what's next, and what else can we do as a city, as a city council, to move in the direction where we finally get paid? Is there light at the end of the tunnel? Is there a timeframe we can anticipate decision here?
We have begun the settlement discussions, as I advised you yesterday, and will be able to advise you greater in closed session in 30 days with the California parties to attempt to come to some sort of resolution that the funds can be released. We've engaged FERC staff in the process so that they can bring pressure to bear upon the California parties, and we're hopeful, but there is no light at the end of the tunnel. I'm sorry to report this, Judge.
And part of what held this up, because the money that's due us is due by the state, not the federal government.
That is correct.
But there was a FERC piece to this because of the lawsuits by multiple parties here. So has the FERC piece now been resolved? FERC's no longer a question or an issue here, and that's getting repaid? Is it strictly just negotiations with the state at this point?
What we've removed is actually the state quotient so that we can negotiate with the state. The FERC had pending against the City of Los Angeles, among others, certain show cause orders. They claim we engaged in Enron-type conduct and economic withholding. Last week, on May 12, two weeks ago, we were absolved of the last of the show cause orders, which would have exposed us to an Attorney General action for K-TAM and trouble damages. So now that that piece is out of it, we have an opportunity to go forward and try and settle.
Okay, and so again, FERC is out of the picture now?
No, FERC is now much more in the picture, and will be able to bring the pressure to bear on the California parties to settle.
Okay, and colleagues, first of all, let me, just two more things, and then I'll close. Number one, we can't emphasize that enough. Part of what was a holdup here is accusations by our Attorney General and others that the Department of Water and Power had engaged in Enron-type activities, manipulating the marketplace, charging well above and beyond what the appropriate sale price was, and we have been cleared of that. The City of Los Angeles and Department of Water and Power did not engage in those types of activities. That's been investigated. That's been vetted out. We are cleared from all of those charges, and I think, again, the people of Los Angeles should stand proud in knowing that. And second, regularly, and earlier today, we were voting on supporting or opposing state legislative matters, federal legislative matters, that come across our desk. As we're talking to our colleagues, be it the state legislature or in Congress, whether it's a public safety issue, a housing-related issue, any other type of issue, colleagues, let's weave into those conversations the message that we need their help, we need their support in the city of Los Angeles and our ratepayers, their constituents, in being repaid the monies that are owed us for being a good neighbor. Thank you very much, and keep up some good work.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas.
Question. So basically, what we can expect, the ratepayers of Los Angeles can expect that we are pursuing and trying to be very careful, because there's a lot of legal issues involved. We are pursuing, trying to figure out how to get those funds that are in excess of $160 million, that now have been proven that those funds are in fact due to the Department of Water and Power, correct?
Not completely, sir. There is still the refund issue, and the refund issue goes to charges that from the period of October 2nd, 2000 through June 20th, 2001, the department received, because we are a price taker, prices over and above what the market should have paid. To the extent that we received a bonus, that money, the California parties are seeking that money should flow back to them. So that would be, excuse the expression, a haircut or a discount off the 160 or 170 million. The issue outstanding on that is the fact...
How much could that amount be?
It could be, the California parties are seeking $90 million.
So it would reduce our share from approximately 160 down to about 70 million, if they were successful?
Yes, but obviously...
I said if they were successful.
Yes.
Correct. You were saying?
But obviously, we have defenses to that issue, and we are currently in the Ninth Circuit on the issue of FERC jurisdiction to even order this, and depending on how the court rules, we may prevail ultimately anyway.
One thing that I want to make clear, that these accusations came very quickly from Sacramento. I was in the legislature when Senator Steve Pease convened a joint hearing of the legislature, both Assembly members and senators, and we actually brought witnesses from the Department of Water and Power, and they thought they were going to skin the Department of Water and Power representatives alive right there in that hearing. It was very contentious, and Steve Pease can get very, very loud, and he was being himself, and what happened was, at the end of that hearing, it was very quiet, because what happened is the Department of Water and Power proved unequivocally that the accusations were unfounded, and I was the representative of Los Angeles on that particular committee, and I was actually a bit skeptical. Well, what the heck's going on with the Department of Water and Power? What are they doing? They shouldn't have done that. I was actually embarrassed about the accusations. But after that hearing, it was very clear to the, at least the legislative members of that committee, that in fact, the Department of Water and Power had done nothing wrong. But being that there were other bad actors, such as Enron and other organizations, that have been proven and have admitted to FERC that they did in fact game the system, the Department of Water and Power has never been proven to having been engaged in any of those activities, well, actually unlawful activities. But the fundamental problem, and the question to you is here, what is the status right now on this issue when it comes to FERC?
The status of the bad actions, the Enron-type conduct, we have been completely exonerated.
What is yet to be resolved at the FERC level on this issue?
With respect to the Enron-type conduct, nothing. We've been completely exonerated of all those acts. FERC issued an order with the Enron-type conduct about three, four months ago, and May 12, they issued the final order exonerating us of any kind of market gaming or manipulation.
So therefore, as of May 12, just a couple of weeks ago, we now have basically removed a big weight on our shoulders now to come back to the state of California and say, now you need to negotiate with us in good faith in order for us to receive what is due the Department of Water and Power, correct?
That is correct.
So and as long as FERC had not made that decision, we were put in a position where we really couldn't argue the point with the state of California, because they immediately would point to Washington and say, well, you know, you haven't been exonerated, or as a matter of fact, we agree that you are not going to be exonerated, and therefore we owe you nothing, or perhaps almost nothing.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Our next speaker is Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one last quick question I forgot to ask earlier. A separate item on today's agenda, not something that's before us right now, is the issue or the question of a contract with, it's known as Van Ness, some of the outside legal counsel, whether that moves forward or not, and the greater issue of consulting or outside law firms helping the city of Los Angeles. Just want to see how that may impact this particular that's before us now. The use of outside legal counsel, is that something that, is that risk? Is that something that could hurt our efforts here in getting repayment?
I will defer to Mr. Snyder.
Hi, Stan Snyder, Assistant City Attorney. The impact of our victories is that we are anticipating our expenses will be less with the Van Ness contract. It's hard to predict, though, because there have been such a flurry of activity in the state and federal level. I hope that answers your question.
Well, again, we're about to discuss the issue in a few minutes, that particular contract is, I think, a beginning of a greater discussion on outside legal counsel. I just want to make sure that we do, for this item, as we proceed with the vote, everything to ensure... to ensure you have the full tools necessary to maximize your chances for our repayment as soon as possible. So if you're comfortable with what's exactly before us right now, then I'm comfortable. But if you have a particular question or concern, now's the time to voice it as it pertains to repayment as stipulated in the agenda.
No, I believe we have the full tools available to us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Our next speaker is Mr. Tom Labange from CD4.
Much. I wanted to rise on this here as Representative from Water and Power, could come up to the table. Henry Martinez, I apologize, Henry, I saw you in the third row, you're in the first row. Members, I just think this is very important, and I want to thank Mr. Padilla, Mr. Cardenas, for their efforts in this matter here. But just to go back 20 years ago, 20 years ago, when you traded power with other entities, which there were fewer, it was basically all with a pad and pencil, correct? So everybody understand that 20 years ago, which is just a short period of time, they would call the person who ran the PG&E plan up there at Morro Bay and say, I need X amount of—
Power.
Power. And then they pencil it out and send it back as you're shutting down Scattergood Number Two. Well, over the years, it developed, where it's become very extremely sophisticated, and Water and Power stood tall and helped the state out. Antonio, it was nice that you were fighting up in Sacramento. I happened to share my career at that time at Water and Power and watched how people fought and stood tall to provide power not just for Los Angeles but for California, which was real important. And I also have a phrase which is very important, I think for all of us, in the end, you will win if you do it right. In the end, Water and Power is on its road to win. They were not gougers, they were not doing the wrong thing. They were providing power for the State of California. So I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Martinez, and thank our city attorneys, because I know it's a fight there, but I think it was very important to get through this fight and to stand tall, because the history of this city is based on those who worked here before us and worked hard to deliver for all of Los Angeles and the state. That's my comments, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That item is approved. Thank you very much. Next item?
Item number 10 was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Okay. Before Ms. Hahn, we have one public speaker card. Ms. Hahn, would you like to take that at the outset?
Yeah.
Okay. And before that, colleagues too, I'd like to recognize City Councilmember from Burbank, Mr. Todd Campbell has joined us. Please give him a Los Angeles welcome. It's nice to have you in chambers, Councilmember. We'll be hearing from him shortly. At this point, I'd like to invite on item number 10 Noel Park forward to speak.
Thank you. My name is Noel Park. I'm the president of the San Pedro and Peninsula Homeowners Coalition. I'm appearing for the coalition today. I'm also a member of the Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council Governing Board and a member of the Port of Los Angeles Community Advisory Committee. And I'd like to report to you that both of those groups, the Neighborhood Council has voted to support this resolution or to support the Assembly Bill. And the Port Community Advisory Committee has advised the Harbor Commission to support the Assembly Bill. And our coalition strongly supports this bill. And with the explosive growth of the ports that we're experiencing, and which is forecasted continue for the next 20-plus years, in which the throughput is forecast to quadruple, the challenges for our communities are huge. And there really does need to be some statewide coordination of this growth of the ports. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Park. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, and I want to thank Noel Park for abandoning the Harbor Commission meeting this morning, which also had some issues that certainly impact our community, and driving all the way down to City Hall to register the input of the Neighborhood Council, as well as the Homeowners Association. And members, this one is easier than the next Assembly Bill that I hope he will support. But this one, AB 2043, by Assemblymember Alan Lowenthal, sets to establish a Maritime Port Strategic Master Plan Task Force, which actually got amended, and I think you have a revised draft of the resolution. But it now will create a California Maritime and Intermodal Transportation System Advisory Council, which basically will set up a coordinated statewide program, which hopefully, at the end of the day, will be able to access federal funding for maritime port growth, security, congestion relief. They're going to look at issues like air pollution, which is caused by the ports. And why I think this is important for us to support, certainly, our port of Los Angeles is the largest West Coast port. It's the largest port in the country. But this is a good idea to finally look at all the West Coast, State of California ports, look at them in a coordinated program that really looks to prepare for the growth. And frankly, up until this time, I don't think there's been any local or statewide vision for how we're going to handle the growth that is going to be coming to these ports. And as Noel Park said, it's expected to quadruple. The statistics I like to throw around is it's going to triple in 20 years. And right now, we have about between 11 and 12 million containers that come through the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles on an annual basis. The thought of that tripling in 20 years with no vision, with no preparation, with no look at security issues, congestion issues, or pollution issues is just, I think, at this point, irresponsible for the State of California and certainly for us locally. So I ask your support on this resolution to support AB 2043. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. We can please open the roll on the item? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That item is approved. And that we'll go forth with as well. Next item, please.
Next item, item number 11 was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Okay. Ms. Hahn, we've also had public hearing on this. There are two speaker cards.
Yeah.
Would you like to, okay, let's move for five minutes of public comment, Noel Park and Todd Campbell.
Well, I won't introduce myself again, but I would also say again that our Coastal Neighborhood Council, the Port Community Advisory Committee, and our coalition have all supported this resolution and this Assembly Bill. I just want to speak to you very quickly. Can't do a presentation in three minutes, but I have a little drawing here. I know you can't see it from there, but I do have some copies I'll leave with you in case anybody wants to look at it, which is the cancer risk due to toxic air contaminants in the air basin. And it's clear that our communities of San Pedro, South Wilmington, and West Long Beach have the highest incidence of cancer risk in the air basin. And 70% of this cancer risk, at a minimum, comes from diesel exhaust. The ports are the two largest sources of air pollution in the air basin. The Times, a couple of years ago, said that the ships alone that call it the two ports create emissions equivalent to a million cars every day. That's in terms of oxides and nitrogen. The ships also emit diesel particulate, which is the real troublemaker. So we have worked diligently on this issue since the first day in 2000 that we ever found out that diesel exhaust is a toxic air contaminant, causes cancer. There's an article in this packet done by our friend John Miller, M.D., who has researched the medical literature and assembled 30 different health impacts of diesel exhaust. We ask you please, please, to support this bill. And I have to say in closing that I think Councilwoman Hahn has dealt with this situation, for which we thank her, but we are not in favor of these amendments as proposed by the port. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Campbell. Councilmember Campbell.
Todd's fine. Thank you, Chairman Garcetti. It's great to see a lot of friendly faces here, and I apologize for the dress. I didn't think I was going to be here today, and luckily I had a tie. But for the councilmembers who are interested in being an environmentalist, this is what you get to wear every day.
On channel 35, they can only see you waist up, so you're okay.
Absolutely. So first of all, I want to thank Councilmember Hahn for coming forward with this resolution to support AB 2042, no net increase at the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach, and also for Member Grul for supporting this as well, and your role, Mr. Chairman. It's a very important one. It continues a promise that was made to the port communities two years ago by our mayor. And as you know, the port suffers the worst air quality, or some of the worst air quality in the basin, something about 1531 in a million cancer risk just from breathing the air there. So this is a tremendous step forward. That said, in the Commerce Committee, there were eight amendments proposed and are to be considered by you. I strongly request, well, it would be great if you didn't adopt them, because I think that they're not material to what you're trying to do today. But if you had to go forward with the amendments, I would suggest that you pull three. And those amendments would be Amendment Number One, Number Two, and Number Eight. Reasons why. Amendment Number One, first of all, there's some content in the language that's not true. The Air Quality Management District does have jurisdiction over the ports. It's not a black and white issue in terms of stationary and mobile. And second, we worked very, very hard with the author to pull enforcement from the public sector. In other words, we pulled public enforcement out of this bill to make sure that the Air Quality Management District would be the lead agency. And I think it's important for the Air Quality Management District to be the lead agency, because we do have a 2010 deadline for ozone. And that possibly, if we miss that deadline, we can lose $12.1 billion. We would also like you to pull Amendment Number Two, largely because it would be important for the Air District or the Air Resources Board to be the lead agency and have the port of Los Angeles or Long Beach help them develop the baseline, not to have the ports develop the baseline and then just have the agencies accept it. And then finally, Eight, I think is a pretty obvious reason why we'd like to pull it. If you strike the language that basically says that the ports would not be stopped from growing without trying to reduce our emissions, that kind of defeats the whole purpose of this whole resolution. We're trying to reduce emissions at the ports and bring back a certain level of quality life for these communities. So I ask that you pull these three amendments if you do decide to go forward with the rest of them. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Let me recognize Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I'd also like to call Ralph Atby, if he's here from the Harbor Department, to maybe talk about some of the concerns that the Port of Los Angeles has with this bill. But I will say again, Mayor Hahn really was the first leader in this area to basically say no net increase of emissions in the Port of Los Angeles, and really has made that hallmark of his administration. And, but as we talk about the growth that is coming to these ports, you wonder, how do we accomplish that? How do we accomplish the no net increase in emission? And what is the baseline that we're talking about in terms of no net increase? And before Ralph talks, let me just say, I support this Assembly Bill. I think it is exactly what needs to happen from a state perspective on the ports. And again, as is said, Noel mentioned it, this is a fact I don't think people realize, 20% of air pollution in the LA basin comes from the ships that come into our harbor. We don't, you don't hear us talking about that. We're not on that all the time. But you can imagine if that is affecting the LA basin, how much more that is affecting the communities of Wilmington and San Pedro. Yesterday in Commerce Committee, we listened to the amendments that the Port of Los Angeles, the Harbor Department would like to see be placed in this bill. And we instructed them to get together with the staff of Alan Lowenthal and see whether or not the author of this bill would be willing to accept some of these amendments. But Todd, you should know that what we said yesterday was, we will support this bill whether or not the amendments are accepted in part or whole. So I'm not going to ask this council to approve, accept, or reject these amendments. I'm going to let the Harbor Department take these amendments to the author of the bill and see whether or not they can come to some agreement on that. But this council is, I hope, is ready to do what the Commerce Committee did yesterday, which was to say, we will support this bill whether or not these amendments are accepted in part or whole. And I think that leaves us free to make another decision at the end of the day. But Ralph, I would like for you to address the City Council and talk a little bit about the concerns the port has on some of these issues. Colleagues, I think you have the amendments. I hope you do, that the Harbor Department is hoping that the author of the bill will accept.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. It's a pleasure to be here, Councilmembers. We certainly support this bill, and I think our bottom line is we believe, in fact, that the emissions here need to be capped, but do have some concerns about kind of how we get from A to B, in particular regarding growth components. As you know, the mayor has already decreed a no net increase for the port, and we're striving to do that. And hopefully, in within a month or so, we're going to be laying out a blueprint for how we're going to be achieving that. And we have a lot of good vision and leadership on behalf of Councilwoman Hahn and Mayor Hahn both. And so we're already striving toward this goal. So this bill kind of mimics the goal that the mayor has already set out on. There are some troubling aspects of the bill. Number one, it would codify something that's an achievable goal that we'd work with industry on achieving. There are a couple of examples I'd like to give you about the bill that we think are troubling. Number one is there's some cost to the cities here. And so what we do is we have agencies that really have as their mandate controlling mobile source emissions, i.e. trucks and federal sources. U.S. EPA has certain control over those. And so we're already working with them, and they're giving us a review on emission studies at no cost. And so we're concerned that why should the city be absorbing those costs when these agencies should be doing that by themselves? A second portion of the bill that's troubling has to do with emissions credit trading. This is a very large issue, and we believe that it is not in keeping with the mayor's no net increase goal, because the mayor specifically said that he wants to make sure those emissions are reduced at the source, next to our communities of San Pedro and Wilmington. And this is a very large environmental justice issue. Creating credit trading programs, as you know, could result in increased emissions in the port and trading off for emissions at a distant locality. In regards to the one issue here that they're asking to have, that we originally had, say, being struck from the bill, we'd certainly look forward to maybe modifying the language in that component in a way that makes it more palatable. The cap on growth is something I think certainly the City Council ought to consider very seriously, because I don't think that's what we want to do here. I think what we want to do is to cap the emissions and not to cap the growth and vitality of this large revenue source for the city. There any questions?
I don't know what happened to my time. And also, did you speak about, I'll tell you one of the ones I'm not thrilled about is the one that actually will cost the City of Los Angeles and Long Beach. It sounds to me like we sort of had this promise from Sacramento, they wouldn't have funded mandates that we were responsible for. So that's one of the issues I also, I would be in favor of looking at the author of the bill to maybe remove the costs to Long Beach and Los Angeles. I'm not sure we're, we agree with that.
Right. And I think that's in keeping, we're doing this very large inventory of emissions from the port right now, and actually, the very agencies you're talking about are actually meeting with us right now and going through and approving the inventory methodologies at no cost to the cities. And so this is really kind of an extension of that work, if you would.
But again, let me just say in closing that we have instructed the Harbor Department to meet with the staff of Alan Lowenthal, talk about these amendments, talk about language that might be meanable to you. But I'm hoping today we will agree with the Commerce Committee yesterday that says, we will support this bill whether or not these amendments are adopted in part or in whole at the state level. So I hope you'll give us your support.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I just, I think you said you want to cap the emissions.
Correct.
That's the correct thing to look at. If you look at the port, its history, when Phineas Vanning first sailed through there, they would never have imagined that this region would have grown.
Correct.
But it did for three or four reasons. One, the water Mahollan brought. Two, the Transcontinental Railway. Three, the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach, and that combined effort. And then four, the airport. I think, and then probably five, Hollywood and motion picture making, but capping that challenge. And I think there's a way to do that, and I think there's a lot of pressure that's being put on, rightfully so, from neighborhood councils, from neighborhood associations to deal with the situation. If you look at the struggles of the port, and they, remember when they first talked about Alameda Corridor, being able to solve all the trucking problems? Well, that's, it hasn't yet, but the infrastructure is there to do it. I know Water and Power was here, and they stepped up to the plate, and the leadership of Ms. Hahn and this energizing and greening the ships that are in the port, correct? And we're moving ahead on that?
Your question was what?
On greening the port, on putting the, turning the diesels off and creating electric power.
Yeah. Actually, we had the first ship do a test the other day, and it was very successful. And within a month, we'll have a big— And within a month, we'll have a big announcement on that's going to go forward. And by the way, that one ship stopping there actually is equivalent to 69,000 truck miles.
Sixty-nine thousand.
Diesel truck miles. Thousand truck miles. And so...
How many trucks? I know trucks, I don't know mine.
Well, that would take one truck off the road that ran, 1.4 trucks off the road that ran continuously all year. But it took away that amount of emissions in a matter of a couple days.
You were like 69,000 trucks in the Coliseum.
Truck miles.
I can figure that out really easy.
It's truck miles.
Right. But it's making a difference.
It's a large difference.
And that's the importance that's making a difference, the challenge. Because I think we all have to learn how to manage growth, how to responsibly deal with these issues here, but also to upgrade it. Because I'm sure this is challenges in other parts of the world.
Correct.
You know, as they deal with ports and the challenges as a grown area and how we deal with it. So I'm sure glad that we're talking about this. But Ms. Hahn, I think we're only talking about it because you're pushing it, and others are pushing it as well, which is so important, and a credit to your leadership on the issue related to the port, so we all feel it. Our council member here is from Burbank, which I know it's been a long year since a boat docked on the L.A. River next to Burbank. But it is impacting the situation because Burbank does get commerce from the ports and the containerized shipping that comes through our cities and the adjacent East Valley District of mine and Wendy's and Tony's, and it impacts us all. So this is a step in the right direction. I also think the thing about trading, I don't like trading because I remember the Port of Los Angeles years ago, and Cindy, you probably remember this, they built a beautiful esqueuary in San Diego County to get credit. Maria, you remember that, to get credit. Well, if they want to do something beautiful, do it in Los Angeles. Do it in the region that is impacted in our area so that it is not necessarily taken away, and don't trade the credits on that. Do the work, cap the challenges, but also manage the growth properly. Ms. Hahn, thank you again for your leadership and the council member. Good to see you. Little more traffic on Riverside Drive coming into the city of L.A. Slow it down for Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Gardines.
Should this requirement be imposed through Sacramento? And say we were to just miss our goals and responsibilities by just that much, could somebody sue us?
That's one of our concerns, obviously, is when something changes from a goal to something that's codified, then certainly that is a real concern that you have, is that, in fact, if the methodology used or something, and that's why it's important for us to have a memorandum, we think, of understanding with the different agencies so we can really work like a team and go forward. And you have to understand, too, that many of these sources, like federal sources, having U.S. EPA involved, having interstate commerce sources, having CARB involved in that is really critical to resolving this issue. And so that's one of our concerns, is that, in fact, that once this becomes codified, then we could be subject to legal actions.
Without this bill becoming law, without codifying these requirements, CARB, AQMD, all these agencies, federal and state and otherwise, do they have any jurisdiction or any demands that they can put upon the port?
Well, I think they can. They have the ability to...
Not only can they, do they?
They do. In fact, there are some regulations coming out of the Air Resources Board that are, in fact, going to require new technology in diesel engines, which are going to be reducing. So they do already have some authority to do that. And I think the bill is strong in that regard, that it does create historic time here when we can maybe use it as a resource to draw these agencies together so we can work as a team to resolve this issue without having this issue of damaging the economy. And so that's why the MOU portion of it or MOA portion of it is really important to us. We think that would then also blunt the opportunity for litigation later on.
Okay. The reason why I ask those questions is because I think it's very important for everybody to understand, whether you consider yourself an environmentalist or you're someone who's trying to raise your children or are concerned about their lungs, it's really important for people to understand that as a government, we have many aspects of things to look at and responsibilities. When you look at this being codified, what is the potential magnitude of a lawsuit? I mean, is the sky the limit, or is it the kind of lawsuit that maybe could tinker with a million dollars here or there? Or is it the kind of lawsuit that can be imposed upon the port in which some kind of mitigation or settlement could be in the tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars, or even upwards of maybe reach a billion dollars?
That's really difficult to predict. I think I'd have trouble doing it.
What I'm saying is, can you help the public understand that when a lawsuit is brought, it's not as simple as saying it's a few thousand dollars?
Correct.
The actual lawsuit could actually impose a responsibility in excess of $100 million or even more, or a responsibility that costs the port billions of dollars over many years. Is that a potential result?
That is a potential. I think the potential there is the fact that you're initially asking local agency here to step forward and try to regulate international cargo sources, and that makes it even more complicated. And so, in fact, it could be very complicated and serious.
One of the things that I'd like to remind people, because every time you see one government trying to impose something on another government, you probably would assume that maybe they're assuming that, say, our port is just sitting on their hands when it comes to these issues. Have we made some inroads lately? Have we done anything that's innovative? Have we done anything that's really setting a standard perhaps throughout the world or throughout the region? For example, don't we have an AMP program that's unprecedented?
Correct. The Alternative Maritime Power Program, or AMP program, was really established by the mayor, and we've had really strong council support as well for that. And that is a program that...
Well, Councilwoman Hahn has very extensively been involved in that issue.
Correct. Yes. And that's what I was discussing earlier, that we did have our first ship at the China Shipping Terminal the other day. Very big program. It's the first time in the history of the world, kind of dramatize it a little bit, that a container ship has been amped at a facility. And that is a really major, major event.
In the interest of time, when that vessel was here, I think I understand it was here for three days and it turned off its engines. Can you give the people who are viewing an actual magnitude that they could understand? How much air pollution did we prevent with that three-day stay?
One of the emissions is emitted by the ships is called NOx emissions. And that ship being there for three days, we estimate, removed 69,000 truck miles of emissions, diesel truck mile emissions off the road. So in a matter of...
Enough emissions. That was enough emissions that if you had a bunch of diesel trucks traveling around that neighborhood and putting down on their odometers 169,000 miles all told, in those three days, that's how much bad air we produced, excuse me, stopped producing for those three days.
Correct. And so the application of this is growing at the port. There'll be more ships at that terminal. And now we understand also that many of our other customers are also looking at retrofitting their ships. The mayor's terminal, for instance, we've already built the infrastructure to add another facility out there.
Good. Well, in the interest of time, my time's up, I just want to remind everybody that please don't think that because Sacramento wants to move this bill, this is good legislation, but at the same time, something that we need to be very careful in making sure that they write it and do it in a way that it's actually appropriate and correct, and it's something that's more of a partnership in moving forward and cleaning the air, rather than something that's imposed with a big stick and says, if you don't, therefore, we're going to punish you. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would just make an amendment with this, and I talked with Ms. Hahn, that with Items One, Two, and Seven that were pulled out, is that if we move forward, as she mentioned, but if those make it into the agreement, that it come back to us just for a final look at it, and then we can decide whether to support it as a group. If those don't make it into it, then we would have support for it. And that'll give everybody reassurance. I would move that friendly amendment.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, colleagues. I just couldn't help but rise one more time. And while I certainly think we have made huge strides at the Port of Los Angeles, and one of the port's greatest critics, Mr. Park, has even admitted that we actually are a lot further along than the Port of Long Beach. In fact, the Port of Long Beach is still studying whether or not cold ironing is a policy that they want to invest in. We do have some very environmentally progressive policies that we're beginning to put in place. But colleagues, you want to talk about a lawsuit. Mr. Park, who just stood up there, is a part of a homeowners' organization, a homeowners' organization that brought a lawsuit against this Port of Los Angeles. We're going to be dealing with that settlement today. It had cost the port $50 million, which will help mitigate some of the wrong decisions that this port has made in the past. And while I am not a great believer in Sacramento being the one that always puts the hammer on us, I frankly think we should be doing the right things. We should be making huge progress in getting rid of the pollution. But I will never stand up here and feel like we need to make a decision. And I think it's a tired argument between economic development and quality of life for people who live in this region. That's a tired argument. It's not going to hold true. Good environmental policies are a plus to economic development. This port is growing. This port is the lead in international trade industry. But frankly, because of some bad decisions in the past, or some inaction, or a lack of really addressing the serious problem of the impacts that this port operation has, not only on Wilmington and San Pedro, but on the entire basin of Los Angeles, I think that's why we're here, and I think that's why we have legislators like Alan Lowenthal who think maybe the big stick is the right thing to have happen to make us do the right thing. So I'm convinced that we are on the right track. I think we're going to find some consensus possibly in some of the language with Assembly Member Alan Lowenthal. But let's not just think about lawsuits that are in the future. We're going to deal one today that is a reality, and it was brought by people who frankly couldn't take it any longer because of the quality of life issues on their daily life.
Thank you. The matter is now before us. It's the committee report with the friendly amendment from Mr. Garcetti, a seconded by Ms. Hahn. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That matter is approved. We'll send it forthwith. Next item?
Item number 12 is called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Mr. Padilla, item number 12.
Actually, I'll defer to the chairman of the committee to speak first on this item, Councilmember Gardines, and if I can speak next.
Mr. Gardines, item 12.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could we have some representatives, some DWP, please? For the benefit of the ratepayers and the people of Los Angeles who are viewing this hearing, could you please briefly tell us what RPS means?
Well, RPS, Enrique Martinez, Chief Operating Officer for Department of Water and Power. RPS definition is Renewable Portfolio Standard. Basically, it's a definition that's been given to the state of California to define renewable technologies in the state, and it goes through a number of different categories of type of technologies and size of technology to determine what that portfolio would look like and qualify.
Can you give us two examples of what are not considered a renewable energy source?
Yeah. One example would be hydro. Hydro below 30 megawatts is considered to be renewable. Anything larger than 30 megawatts is considered nonrenewable.
So, for example, hydro, that's, again, a technical term. You're talking about Hoover Dam, right?
That's correct.
And they let the water through and it produces electricity, that's a hydro facility?
Yeah. Basically, power produced by hydroelectric power, which is water accumulated in a reservoir or a river, that is hydro.
For example, doesn't DWP, a lot of Angelenos are familiar with Castake Lake, which is just north of us. We own that, or that's one of our facilities?
Castake is a state facility that we use the water to pump back or produce power from that facility that we have.
Is that facility considered renewable energy by the standards that the state uses to consider what's a renewable energy source or not?
No, it's not.
That's a hydro facility, right?
It is a hydro facility, but the way the system and the technology is used, it uses energy that is produced at night to pump the water, and then it's released during the day when it's needed. So technically, it's a hydro, but it's not a straight run of the river or a storage type of facility under hydro criteria.
Okay. Now, when it comes to this renewable energy requirement upon organizations like DWP, whether they be private or public, didn't the state of California actually require, or wait a minute, was it a guideline that they tried to attain a goal, for example, like a Southern California Edison or a PG&E that's a privately owned energy producer? Is that a requirement that the state mandated on them, or is it a goal that they required of them?
Well, first of all, the state has stated in policy in their bills that it is a goal. It is a goal to achieve 20% by 2017. And there are a number of other provisions within the law that establishes how it would be done, or the caveats around the issue of obtaining that goal.
Okay. Now, the Department of Water and Power, who runs that? Is it the people who are here in Los Angeles, or is it people who are in Sacramento?
Well, first of all, the city of Los Angeles owns the Department of Water and Power. The city council is our regulator. We're governed by the order commissioners. And in essence, all the decisions are locally made by this council, ultimately to adopt policies and regulatory issues of rates and other policies.
Are some fundamental policies of your department, is it to keep the rates down for the ratepayers?
That's just one of them. The other one has to do with reliability. We want to make sure that...
Wait a minute. What do you mean by reliability?
Well, reliability means that when the power is required, needed by the city and the customers of the city, that indeed the power is available for use upon demand.
What could happen if your reliability is not in balance?
Well, there's two things that can happen. One, you can, first of all, we have to, by a mandate of operating a control system, we have to maintain a balance between supply and demand. If the unbalance is reached, one of the options is to balance the load by cutting power from the load side, or buying additional power from the market to augment our own ability to produce and control that.
Now, first of all, if you cut power, what's the layperson term for that? What does the street person know? What is that called?
Blackouts, brownouts. Your power goes off at times of the day. When you need it, it's not there. And so, yeah, you get your power cut off.
Now, what's the big deal about going to buy energy from somebody else if you're kind of short on it?
Well, you're always exposed to the issue of the spot market, and as we see in the spot market, and the state of California has been one, has been unstable. It is, you pay what you get at the time that you need it, and so you don't have a lot of negotiating power or position to really obtain reliable and low-cost energy on the spot market.
Okay. Again, in layman's term, what does that mean? That means you could be paying 20% more, 30% more, 50% more than producing your own power?
Yeah. Under our control, we can always mandate and establish a way to produce power at the lowest rate. When we start adding, go to the spot market, it means that we buy more expensive power for the general term than we would allow us to produce ourselves.
Now, go ahead.
Randy Howard, Department of Water and Power. One thing I'd like to add is, under the current conditions of supply and demand in the state, when you go to the market, it might not be available. And that's a reality of the current situation.
Has that ever happened here in California?
Well, yes. The 2000, 2001 energy crisis, there was a, and we all experienced that here in the city, or around the city, I should say.
Did we have any blackouts in the city of Los Angeles during that time?
No. City of Los Angeles not incur any blackouts related to an issue dealing with supply-side availability. We had our own plenty of capacity and able to dispatch and maintain the city fully served.
Okay. What kind of activity is going on in the Department of Water and Power today different than what was going on five years ago, when this kind of legislation was being contemplated on other power producers such as PG&E, Southern California Edison, all of them? What's going on today that wasn't going on realistically in the Department of Water and Power on this issue of renewable energy or RPS?
Well, first of all, we have initiated two major projects that the city has approved, or the council has approved. One is the investment in wind, in a wind farm, 120 megawatt, which, when it's built, will be the largest municipal-owned wind farm in the nation. We have also, the council has approved an investment to build a biogen plant here somewhere in the city of Los Angeles, which will add another 40 megawatts of biogen technology or biogen energy into our system.
Okay. So the bottom line is there is some activity moving toward increasing the energy that we're getting in the Department of Water and Power to Angelenos is cleaner energy. There is a move there. But let's be honest, it's next to nothing compared to the bigger picture. We've just started, correct?
That is correct.
Is there a problem with us trying to get to 20% by the year 2017?
No. I think the issue is going out there and determining the strategy and by which we maintain the balance between what we need to accomplish for the department and our customers. One is the issue of continued reliability. I think we have to keep that in the foremost aspect of our plans. I think we have to keep that in the foremost aspect of our plans. Second, the issue of how do we integrate the cost of the technology into our rates and try to maintain a levelized standard?
Bottom line, and I'll ask to speak again later, but bottom line is, is the Department of Water and Power understanding that the wave of the future and the way in which you're going to do business by 2017 is going to be where about 20% of your energy is coming from a renewable energy source? Yes or no?
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for that, I think, very educational Q and A for anybody who's watching here in the audience and anybody watching from home. I have a couple of questions. I support the recommendation that the committee has before us, but if the department can please tell me, this isn't the first time renewable portfolio standards are the subject of state legislation. What was the first bill or the successful bill that created RPS for IOUs in California?
In 2002, the state adopted AB 1078, which established the goals of renewable portfolio standards for the investor-owned utilities. During that time, in that legislation, they asked that the municipal utilities, such as LA DWP, try to achieve similar goals utilizing its own local process.
Okay, so you mentioned 2002, AB 1078. Had the term RPS or the concept of renewable portfolio standard been a subject of conversation, either at the state level or at DWP prior to that?
Yes. Prior to that, the city council adopted in August of 2000 an integrated resource plan in which we looked for the resources that we would utilize for the next 10 years to meet our obligations with our customers. And within that plan, we established what was the first of the department's policies as to what we would do with renewables.
Okay. And so state legislation was in 2002. The city of Los Angeles and the Department of Water and Power integrated resource plan was 2000. And tell me if this is a safe assumption to make, that the dialogue of the concept, the establishing of a priority of renewable energies and pursuing green power sources began even before then? Is that correct?
Well, I think the discussions, the IRP, yes, began. The IRP was finally adopted in August of 2000.
But at bare minimum, we can say 2000 was the beginning of the discussion formally at the city of Los Angeles level, where now, four years later, in 2004.
Correct.
Does the city of Los Angeles, our LA DWP, have a renewable portfolio standard or something comparable today? Yes or no?
Not as compared to the state, and the answer is no.
Okay. And I think, colleagues, that's very important, because in the discussion of whether or not the city of Los Angeles should have taken a position on AB 1078, it was very clear, we do not want to lose our autonomy. There is a big difference between investor-owned utilities, known as IOUs, and municipal-owned utilities, such as the Department of Water and Power, who are in fact the largest in the country, largest municipal utility in the country. But colleagues, it was said very loudly, very clearly in 2002, that the best way to ensure that municipal utilities, including DWP, are not exempt in future legislation, is for the city of Los Angeles to not do anything in response to the state's mandate or goal, whatever you believe, of the private sector, the IOUs. And so it's been four years since we began discussing this at the city council. It's been two years since AB 1078. We're now in the year 2004, and the city of Los Angeles still does not have a renewable portfolio standard, at least not one that measures up to what the state has established for the IOUs. And so will the department, please tell me, when will we have an RPS to consider before this city council?
Well, first of all, our objective to get a formalized, approved recommendation to both the CNR and then back to council would be before the end of the year. So this council can act upon a renewable portfolio standard that can be fully vetted out and understood and implemented going forward by the Department of Water and Power.
Okay, two more quick questions. Because the state law has required the IOUs to move in that direction, how much time has it taken the IOUs to establish renewable portfolio standards? How long have they had to figure out how they get to the 20% by 2017?
Well, I think that question can, and I don't want to argue the issue here, but let's remember back that the IOUs have been using SO4 contracts since the 1980s. These were contracts that were adopted by the state of California to increase the amount of energy produced by renewables at an inflated cost, and once it was subsidized with the customers of the utilities. That being said, those contracts have become in a lot of scrutiny over the years, and particularly around the time of the energy crisis, where many utilities abandoned those contracts because they were highly overpriced and highly leveraged, that indeed became an issue of declining the percentages of energy produced from renewables to the portfolio. Now, the IOUs have learned significantly from those times, and I think that's one of the reasons why the state right now is being careful in not launching another effort into renewables, fully blinded and trying to understand what happened to the market during that time period. But they've been around for a long, long time.
They've been around for a long time, but certainly a lot of progress has been made on the IOU front since 2002. And what I'm saying, colleagues, is if our IOU counterparts can move much more progressively, much more aggressively via mandate or otherwise, in less than a year and a half, why has it taken the city of Los Angeles more than four years to still not even be at a place where we have an RPS? I think, colleagues, it is the intent and will of this council to establish an RPS for the city of Los Angeles. We want to do so in a way that pays a lot of respect to the reliability concerns, the affordability concerns, and the security concerns that DWP has mandated. But be very clear, this council wants to be at that point. I want to be at that point, and I've been waiting, and I've been waiting, and I've been waiting, and we're still not at that point. Now, if you tell me that we're going to be there before the end of the year, then that's light at the end of the tunnel for me. And the chairman assures me that we will have at least a plan and the beginnings of that final step by the end of the summer, and that gives me something to look forward to. But colleagues, I hope that you join your voice with mine in making sure this is a priority for the Department of Water and Power, because we've been talking about this for a long time. We have yet to see a specific RPS before us. And as a closing point, I just want to say, the department has finally understood, I think, a shift that we wanted to make. We spent a lot of money in the green power program, which, from what I can gather, was nothing but a pass-through. We use city of Los Angeles ratepayer dollars to go out and purchase, quote-unquote, "green energy" provided by others, and we were nothing but a pass-through through our customers. We want to make sure that we use the largest municipal utility in the country in our dollars and flexing our power to invest in the technologies, to invest in the infrastructure that provides green energy. It's good for the environment and is consistent with our goals and mandates to provide affordable, reliable energy service to our ratepayers.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I want to thank my colleagues, Chairman Cardenas and Alex Padilla, for their leadership on this issue. And I agree 100% with what they have said today in terms of the need for us to act and to act quickly. And we may disagree on the position to take today on this, but I know we agree on what that prize is, in terms of making sure that we have a sustainable Department of Water and Power, and one that doesn't just look at short-term cost savings, but long-term costs to our health. I agree as a general concept that having autonomy is something necessary and important for our Department of Water and Power. But colleagues, let me give you this analogy. When we looked at some of this clean water stuff that today we're going to be discussing in closed session, when the federal and the state government, the regional boards actually gave us mandates that seemed unachievable for clean water, the Bureau of Sanitation, whose technical expertise, I think, in this country is second to none, initially, and rightfully so, because we didn't have the resources at that point, said, "Wait a second. We can't do this." We didn't have a choice then whether or not to have autonomy. Actually, there's federal law that already covered this. But because that was in place, it pushed us to begin to do the thing so that when we passed this budget, we had $13.5 million in this year to begin the cleaning up of the water, to meet those clean water mandates. It's the same thing here. We're saying, here in the city of Los Angeles, we're very proud to have a public utility, and I agree. It's great because we don't have blackouts and all these other things that have given a lot of return to the local ratepayers. Except in this area, we're saying, you know, if you're somebody who lives where there's a private utility, you actually are guaranteed that your power company is going to be more sustainable than the DWP today. Because otherwise, we're taking it on faith that DWP is going to get there, and I'm going to work very closely with DWP. I talked with Mr. Wiggs when we traveled to Mexico two and a half years ago, and he said 1% a year. But as Mr. Padilla said, a few years later, we haven't been doing 1% a year. And I'm very proud of the things that we have been doing. The wind power, very proud, and I spoke with Mr. Salas during budget times, about 18 million for solar, which is important from an economic development perspective, not just because I know it's more expensive than other renewable energies. But these are the things that we have to do. But we have multiple responsibilities. The Department of Water and Power has responsibility, yes, for cheap power. It does have responsibility for reliability of that water and that power, too. But I also think it's always been a force for economic development. If we want to make Los Angeles truly a Silicon Valley of energy technology, we need to make sure that we're having DWP act in concert with that. And we also have responsibility for health. That great op-ed piece that was in the LA Times that said, "The Cost of Living Cheap", colleagues, what is the price for us of living cheaply, of saying, "We got the cheapest power this year," but then we see these maps, for instance, of what the impact of bad air quality is in the air basin, when we look at cancer rates, when we look at asthma rates, when we look at all the things, maybe not just in Los Angeles, but the other places where we produce this power. I think it is critical that this state mandate, that we should not have an exemption from it. This should be something guaranteed to all of the citizens of California, that their power companies will meet that goal. And if we're going to meet it anyways, we don't lose anything here. It just is that insurance policy that makes sure that we will get to that goal together. I also want to thank Silver Lake Neighborhood Council. I think the first neighborhood council that took a position, with no prodding of my own, in support of adopting renewable portfolio standard of 20% by 2010. That may be too quick to do it, and that may be a bit aggressive, but I really want to thank them for taking the position, and I look forward to other neighborhood councils doing that. But at least by 2017, the department says we can do it, so we have nothing to fear, and I am certainly going to be voting against this, and I hope that we will be in support of this bill, and that other colleagues of mine will join me.
Mr. Villarosa?
Yes, Mr. President, members, I too want to thank Chairman Cardenas and yourself, Mr. President, for your leadership on this issue. And like Mr. Garcetti, I understand the distinction that has been made with respect to the difference between a municipally-owned utility and an IOU. But I can tell you that in this city, a city where we should be leading not only the nation but the world, we have got to do a better job than we've done up to now. And I would like to associate my remarks with Mr. Garcetti, because I think he said it quite well. I too signed on to a 2010 timetable, and one of the reasons why I did was because there's been a complete inertia on this issue, a failure to move ahead with any kind of urgency here. I believe there is urgency, and I believe that LA needs, as a municipally-owned utility, to lead the way, not because we're required by California statute, but because the people of this city, the children of this city deserve no less. And so my hope would be that this discussion would be a good opportunity to get a sense of the council, and a good opportunity for the department and its commission to begin to articulate and develop renewables portfolio standard that we can all be proud of, that leads not just the state but the nation in a way that I believe a municipal-owned utility should. This isn't an issue of fiscal, a fiscal issue, though it obviously has some impact on that. This is an issue about where we need to be in the future. We know that cities across the nation, states across the nation, will take our lead and move in the same direction. I want to thank Chairman Cardenas and Council President Padilla for raising this issue as well.
Mr. Labange?
Members, I ask you to vote yes, not no, on this issue. And I want to just rise to this, because I don't know if we know all the details. I don't know if we know all the details about what it takes to run a Department of Water and Power and bring power to Los Angeles. Bring power to Los Angeles. How many plants do we own? We operate. East Valley? South Valley?
Here in the basin, yeah, we have four large power plants in the basin.
Listen, members, four large power plants. We're cleaning them up, right?
They're all clean at this point. They're all clean.
Are they all bringing power to Los Angeles?
Definitely. They're dispatched for the Department of Water and Power solely for the purpose.
And, members, I just wanted to remember, people, Eric, because you're and I are opposites here, I'd like to argue with you a little bit here on this here, push it just to be sure. The issue is that people before us built this system, built this system. Now we got to take it to a higher standard to make sure it's a clean system. But the people who we represent want low-cost power, want low-cost power. Now, a lot of us, and I don't know how many of us have signed up for green power, which is not all totally here yet, but I'm sure some of the council members are. I don't know what that is, out of 15, how many sign up and pay a little more for green power, even though it's not here. But I want to see reliable power to the people of Los Angeles. I want to see clean plants. I have not been to the Colorado River in a long time, but I felt very bad when I saw the plant, which wasn't ours, but it was an Edison plant. This is before deregulation, there was pewing smoke. I hate to hear stories about the challenges in the Grand Canyon of plants that not just ours, but others own. But I want to make sure they're cleaned up, and at the same time, I want to use technology. But I don't want to vote away for the people who we represent across the city, across the city, a challenge that may dim the lights, that may dim the lights. What would happen if we had this goal, if this was passed and we didn't meet it? What would we be required to do?
I can answer that. The problem with giving up the local control would be then, it doesn't mean that we're going to get to where we'd like to be anytime sooner. What you're doing is giving up control over who has jurisdiction, over deciding what type of resources and the pace at which they're going to be implemented within your system. So you give up the flexibility of your reliability, as well as your financial stability, by turning over that jurisdiction. The other point I would like to make, the investor-owned utilities, while they already have that established as a goal, they have until June of this year to actually provide an implementation plan. They have not implemented these policies prior to the Department of Water and Power. And as we install facilities, when the Department of Water and Power established providing electric service, we were 100% renewable. We only used hydroelectric power. As technology has changed, as the density of the city has changed and the technologies...
And the use in the homes, right? There's more appliances in homes.
That is correct. Our resources have changed in the mix.
Let me add one more point, and I think this is just maybe a subtle distinction between us and the IOUs. The city still runs a vertical integrated utility. That means we're responsible for not only the generation, the transmission and distribution of how we get power delivered to the city.
Generation, transmission, distribution. That's a power company.
That's a power company.
That's LA Water and Power.
Correct. The IOUs are not responsible for generation. They're not responsible for transmission. All they're responsible for is delivery of the product to the customers. So in essence, their planning horizon and their ability to basically provide that long-term reliability at a stable cost is not really an issue that they have to deal with, because they have relief of having responsibilities to mandate or control these other systems. So they're negotiating, and they'll be negotiating with suppliers, that in essence, the contracts may end up, and they have to be approved with a CPUC, to ultimately recover the rates and establish the cost of energy. From that perspective, our job's a little bit different, a lot different from the IOUs, and that's why we want to be careful in making sure that this council understands and is fully vetted the issue of the aspects of renewables, as it implies and provides the reliability and the service quality to our customers here in the city.
And you're working with other municipalities, like Burbank and Glendale and Pasadena...
That's correct.
...on these issues that relates to this legislation. Members, if you look back in the history, and I do talk about history a lot, when we developed a power company in Los Angeles, when we removed private power in the '20s, when the great Ezra Scatergood developed a power format, it was very important. Now we have an opportunity to make sure we do it right and do it better, but not lose the opportunity to provide low-cost, reliable power to the people of Los Angeles. Members, I ask you to pay attention real closely and vote no on this. Thank you. Do you have an, we're going to have a correction maybe from the Rhodes Scholar. Thank you.
I have Ms. Hahn next on the queue, followed by Ms. Miskowski, each for a first time, Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Garcetti for a second time.
Mr. President, colleagues, a lot of good points have been made today. I'm feeling that what's gotten into the report before us today is not actually what the Commerce Committee really moved yesterday, and maybe my other two members can remember it the same way I remembered it. Again, this is an example, not unlike what we just discussed with the legislation that impacted the ports. This is an example of a legislation that is out there that could actually be the hammer, that could actually be the incentive for this department to finally get to its renewable portfolio plan. I was understanding yesterday what we said, we would oppose this... I was understanding yesterday what we said, we would oppose this bill unless it was amended to allow the City of Los Angeles to substitute our 20% plan. And if we didn't get our plan, then that bill pretty much legislated that we did it. But it gave us an opportunity to put our plan in place, and that became the incentive. That became the issue that, Mr. President, you said you've been waiting for. When are we going to get our plan? Well, that's the only way this is going to work. If this bill is amended to exempt us only if our plan has been created, adopted, and it can be substituted in place of that. And that's how I understood that we moved yesterday. I don't feel like I'm reading that in the report. And that's what I'd like to see spelled out. I think Mr. Garcetti might feel better if that was spelled out in this report.
Well, does anybody want to respond to that? Mr. Cardenas as chairman or the staff? Ms. Miskowski's next on the queue.
Again, this is a member of the committee. I agree. We indicated that we would oppose it unless amended to allow the city to substitute what the city is going to do. So that should be how it reads, and I think that that was our...
You're absolutely right, Ms. Miskowski. That was part of the discussion. We actually talked about five or six different things that we would like to see amended toward or allow, et cetera. But what came out of the report was oppose unless amended, more simplistic than that. But you're absolutely right, Janice. That was part of the involved discussion that we had on what kind of amendments we would have to see in order to support such a bill. And the main crux of getting that out of committee and to the floor was to allow our department's representation in Sacramento to convey that to them and then start the negotiations and really have a position where they can actually enforce that.
Right. And actually convey to them that we are going to meet that goal, as Mr. Cardenas said, and I just asked Mr. Cardenas to indicate when he is setting this, because I know that he is now looking at setting the next Commerce and Energy Committee, so for just, again, the precise purpose of this. But, members, what I had pushed my button to say, and very often we don't join the two, but we must join the two. Doing better, doing what is right, is going to cost more. There has been no disagreement in the universe of renewable portfolio that there will be more cost. The disagreement is how much more cost. There are some who's going to say it's exorbitant, it's extraordinary, therefore we have to go slow. There are others who say if we go fast, that cost, which might appear high now, will come down and will be lower. But the truth is, it's going to cost more. And we had a huge debate in this chamber over many weeks about whether or not we would approve a rate increase. Doing right, doing renewable portfolio, committing to it, is going to cost our ratepayers more. We've got to join those two issues. I get very concerned here when we talk about one in an abstract and the other in an abstract and don't join it. Let me say that later, when we're in executive session, on the mandate of clean water, on something that is mandated, we are going to do right. We are going to commit to more projects, more process, but it's also going to be a commitment to more expense, which is a tying together of the do right by the bill to achieve clean water, but recognize right then and there that it's going to cost our ratepayers in terms of their clean water charges more money. We've got to continue to recognize that, do it as economically as we can, do it prudently, but do it and recognize that it is going to cost more. We can't talk about environmentally doing good and doing what is right and not tying it to that recognition that there's going to be a price that we are all going to pay but should want to pay and have to pay for a better quality of life, a better future, cleaner water, cleaner air. Those are reality. We need not be afraid of it, but we also should address it. So I think that the amendments that we talked about should be reflected, and I'm happy to let Mr. Cardenas indicate what he believes that they were on the committee so that we can all vote for this, but recognizing that it's a move forward by the end of the year to achieve something, but at the same time, talk about the recognition of what that is going to mean to our ratepayers.
Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you for that clarification, Janice, and Cindy Miskowski, for what occurred in the Commerce Committee just yesterday. In addition to that, I want to make something very, very clear. If you care about the environment, continue to pressure the Department of Water and Power. I am, and I think Angelenos need to make sure the Department of Water and Power is reminded of the fact that this is our environment as well. And the fact of the matter is, Ms. Miskowski is absolutely right. In the interest of time, we didn't hear the report on RPS, which isn't the end-all-or-be-all. That's just part of the beginning of the process in which the Department of Water and Power is going to move, compared to historically, they're going to move with light speed. I do expect, and I've said many, many times on this floor and in committee, that we need to have an RPS standard for the Department of Water and Power here in the year of 2004 and commence to follow that standard and do it. Is the Department of Water and Power ready to have that in place by the end of this year?
Councilmen, that is our intent, and that's the direction we're heading, based on your direction and the other committee members.
The main reason why I personally cannot support AB 3005, the Calderon bill, which is before us unless amended, is because Sacramento has a terrible record of trying to impose their ideas on many industries, specifically on the power industry. And whether we like it or not, the City of Los Angeles is very much involved in the power industries. Matter of fact, the biggest municipally-owned authority in the entire country. And we need to set the standard, and we need to be the standard bearer. And another thing that I want people to understand, if people are thinking that this idea of a renewable portfolio standard that was imposed as a goal on private industry and here in California is actually doing anything, with all due respect, if you look at where they're getting their energy on a daily basis, they are not meeting their goal. They are not meeting their goal. I don't want that. I want something that we can actually produce that is careful, it's methodical, it's respectful to the ratepayer, and it's something that actually works. And what works is a renewable portfolio standard adopted by the Department of Water and Power that actually works and actually produces energy much, much cleaner than saying on paper, "We're gonna," but we're actually not. And that's what's happening in the real world. Once again, fundamentally, the problem with supporting this bill right now is Sacramento has a terrible, terrible track record on getting things right. And certainly in this particular arena, they have one of the worst records. They actually deregulated in California. And then after billions of dollars of mistakes, they actually said, "Oops, let's underegulate." And now we're in this quagmire, which in fact has actually produced a much worse situation than we were in before. So my point is, we can't support this bill the way it is. I certainly don't have a problem with putting ourselves to the task where we actually can vote on something today, saying, "We oppose this bill unless amended to say if you don't have a renewable portfolio standard locally, then we will impose one on you from Sacramento." I don't mind having that. There's a, you know, I heard of an old battle that happened, I think, a couple thousand years ago, where they said, "You know, we're here for a purpose." So what did they do? They burned the ships and said, "We're not going home until we finish the job. We either die here or we do what we came for." I think the Department of Water and Power is ready, and everything that you've told us in committee on the record is you are ready, and you're rolling up your sleeves, and you're ready to produce a policy that can be followed by the Department of Water and Power and a policy that can produce cleaner energy, and you're willing to live up to that standard. And we're going to do it this year. And what this bill from Sacramento is saying is, "We're going to tell you how to do it." Again, ladies and gentlemen, that's the wrong way for us to do it. They haven't got it right yet. The private industry is not doing it right either. Now, why should we allow Sacramento to give us that standard when we're ready to do it ourselves? We're going to do it ourselves.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let the record reflect Tony Cardenas as the new Hector of our time. I'm tempted to make all kinds of Trojan horse analogies too, but I won't. I think we all agree, and I want to thank Mr. Cardenas, because that language does cover exactly what I was interested in. I don't mind opposing this if we take a position, and I'll just clarify that language one more time with our clerk, that written in a way that would exempt the city unless we don't adopt a renewable portfolio standard. That really will keep our feet to the fire, retain autonomy, which I started at the beginning is always better than not. I just don't always trust that we all will get where we want to be unless there is that fire. This is the way that they can prove themselves to actually light that fire underneath our feet in a way that we can then support this legislation. So if they make those changes, it could come back here, we could support it, and at the same time, have that same need. I know Mr. Labons wanted to have a little bit of debate, but we've basically settled it. But I don't think this is going to... Renewable energy will not dim anybody's power. Not adopting renewable portfolio will certainly continue to dirty the air, though. And I think that we have a bond, because I am one of those Green Power subscribers. We've got a great record of subscribing people to Green Power, that we have a bond with those customers, not just to buy existing Green Power that's already out there. Because I think when people sign up, they think they're also helping build a market for Green Power. And they may be kind of in an indirect way, but I think we can be a force for actually putting up those clean plants, putting up those standards, and building a portfolio that all Angelenos can be proud of. When we just come down to saying it's going to cost more, it's going to cost more, I continually reject that language, because short-term costs do not equal the same thing as long-term costs. And we have to get beyond that in our thinking and in our language. When we look and we wonder why our families get cancer, where we wonder why our kids have asthma, why we wonder about the impact in other places, we could get costs even lower than what we pay today if we want to get a bunch, build whatever we're going to do new with just a lot of the cheapest coal plants without a lot of the clean energy requirements in them. No doubt, we could get energy prices lower than where they would be. But we all agree as a council, that isn't sound policy. That isn't healthy policy. So I think we have resolution on this today, moving forward, in a way that we'll make sure that we get to where I know DWP articulates it wants to be, but where this board and this department with this council has to be.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to...
Excuse me, Mr. President. Clarification on that. Do you wish to strike what's on the committee report right now, that all, the entire, unless amended to protect the cities, or that's added? Okay, thank you.
It's additional language, not substitute language. And if there's nothing further, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And again, let's have this matter go forthwith, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 15, called special by Councilmember Villarreal.
Mr. Villarreal. Item 15. Actually, before we get to 15, members, item 27 had previously been called special. Understand, public hearing was conducted on that item unless there's a question or debate on item 27. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Back to 15. Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Mr. Council President. Members, maybe I can ask representatives of the DWP and the city attorney's office to come up on this issue. You know, members, I'm very glad to see that both the Department of Water and Power and the city attorney's office have requested that item 15 on today's agenda be returned to the DWP after I deferred this item last week. As you know, I wrote to Mr. Fujioka and the CLA, Mr. Deaton, and asked them to take a close look and answer a number of questions related to the significant costs the city's experiencing for outside legal counsel. The item I asked to be deferred is an example of one of the contracts, and there are many others that don't even come to the council for approval, and I'd like to get answers about all of these as well. Let me share with you for a second a little bit about the contract that I asked to be deferred. The DWP has requested a contract, or had requested, a contract extension, an increase for Van Ness Faltman, a DC-based law firm that has handled a number of regulatory lawsuits and legal issues, including the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission investigation into possible price manipulation by DWP during the energy crisis. I think that was the item that the council president spoke to, and one we know we were accused of manipulation. We know that never occurred. I'm with Councilmember Cardenas that I remember back in Sacramento when we first heard those accusations, and we did not believe then that the city had in fact engaged in that effort after hearing evidence of the contrary. We had to get a lawyer. I'm not questioning the fact that we had to retain a lawyer. We did in 2001 through a competitive selection process, so that was appropriate. They were selected from a group of 12 competing firms and were awarded a three-year agreement for $1 million per year. So that's a $3 million total. Their agreement was approved by the city council, as all agreements of three years or more are required to be approved, and it expired, or expires until July 30th of 2004. The agreement, members, has been increased two times since the initial award due to the heavy volume of work associated with the FERC investigation. These contract modifications bring the total contract amount, and I hope you're all listening, over three years to $5.3 million, almost double the original amount. Item 15, which was deferred last week, would extend the original agreement with Van Ness an additional three years and authorize another $2.5 million per year, bringing the total compensation for life of the contract, including the extension before the council today to $12.8 million. Now, members, I want you to know that on the same day that this item was on the council floor, the DWP had issued a press release, and the press released, lo and behold, that we won the FERC lawsuit. And in fact, a few minutes ago, in response to the council president's questioning, we were told that we knew we were going to win, or that there was a good likelihood, two or three months before that. And yet, we moved ahead for a contract of $7.5 million. And my time, thank you, because that was the three minutes, and I have, I think, six.
You're good.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Information. Wait a second. I want to know why a man gets six instead of three.
Author a motion.
The author of the motion. You get to do that.
It's doubled, and the chairman of the committee gets doubled.
That's one of the rules that Ms. Miskowski let me know about early on. Thank you very much.
See, now you gave away the secret.
Yes. I do look at the rules from time to time, members. In addition to that, you should note this item that we were about to approve had a 7% increase to the hourly rates for outside counsel. The partner rates were increasing from $350 an hour to $375. So because of all those issues... And first of all, I want to make something publicly absolutely clear. This is an attempt to point fingers at anyone, either the council, the committee, the city attorney's office, the mayor. This is an item I believe that all of us should be interested in. When you read about the increase in cost that has been associated with outside counsel, we all have a responsibility to protect a public person, to do everything possible to ensure that we're playing our part in doing that. One of the questions I have here is, what happened here? We put out a press release on the day that we moved this item forward on the council floor that says... You should all know, by the way, that since I deferred this item, we've been told by the Department of Water and Power that we don't need a contract of this size. We were also told, in response to the question of why there's a 7% increase in the hourly rate, that we probably could have negotiated a better rate, given that we're now proposing to spend about $12.5 million for a contract. And so what happens, as you know, their economies of scale, when you have a contract of that size, you usually can go to someone and say, "Hey, how about reducing the cost?" And so my question is, why we put out a press release on the one hand, what happened here, saying we won the lawsuit, and at the same time, asking the council to move forward for a contract extension of this magnitude? On my own time now, his time now.
First of all, the press release was a letter we received a week ago, Tuesday, right before the board meeting, where basically was sent from the FERC notifying us that we're relieved of all accusations. Took the opportunity at that point to report to our commission the findings of the FERC.
Let me just stop you for a second. The press release says you received this on May 12, not the day of the meeting. Just...
May 12th is what I'm referring to. That's when, the first time we got notification, the letter from FERC said, we have it there for Stan.
Actually, we got it May 18th. We got it May 18th. It's dated May 12th.
Okay. The fax that we received is dated May 18th, and the letters dated May 12th. It was faxed to our offices, and thus the day that...
And this press release was dated May 19.
It was the day after.
The day after.
The day after we received it. So when we notified the city, our commission of the findings, then at that point, we decided to generate a press release, which was issued the following day. So it had nothing to do in correlating the contract with the specific findings of the FERC.
Now, I've been told by... Now, I've been told by the department that we now believe that we don't need a three-year contract for the 7.5 million, that in fact, we may only need a one-year contract extension for much less. Is that correct?
That is correct. And what we're anticipating is, depending on the additional activity at FERC, which there's still work to be done, we believe that one year will suffice at this point.
Is it also correct, again, I made a representation, that the department has indicated that they believe that we can renegotiate the rates here, given the fact that we have spent a great deal of money with the same firm, and that because you get economies of scale with that, there's a real possibility here of reducing the rate and not increasing its 7%. Is that correct?
That is not correct.
That is not correct.
And also...
Mr. Salas indicated that, that in fact, it was his understanding that we could negotiate a better rate, given all the money that we spent with this council.
I don't believe that's correct.
Okay, what precludes us from doing that?
Nothing precludes us from going back and asking for a rate reduction. In this case, the firm...
As I thought. I'm sorry.
No, in this case, the firm asked for a 7% increase, which was given to them, and there were a variety of other minor changes to the contract. Also, I would like to clarify one thing. It is anticipated that these FERC proceedings will take more than a year. The department is proposing to come back with a one-year contract at a lesser amount. But it is anticipated that these proceedings will take considerable period of time.
When you're saying more than a year, three years?
It's hard to calculate, because various things are on appeals in various courts, but it could be three years. It could be more, it could be less. It's hard to predict.
What would preclude us from doing this on a year-to-year basis?
Nothing would, and that's what the department is proposing to do.
And nothing would preclude us from attempting to renegotiate a better price here as well, a better hourly rate? Is that correct?
That's correct. Nothing would preclude us from trying that, but I don't think that the firm will be amenable to reducing its rates.
Okay.
Tell somebody, I'd add one more point. The issue of the FERC activities are not just related strictly to the current lawsuits or the issues that are going on with the California crisis. There are many other factors that we get involved with FERC in interconnection with transmission, regulatory matters that affect our ability to provide and maintain control of our systems, the issue of RTOs. So there are a number of other factors that continue to occur back in Washington DC, which we've got to keep track of, intervene at the appropriate time. We don't have council, direct council back in Washington, so we rely upon Van Ness to provide us that ability to...
I'm not questioning the council, to be... I'm not questioning that it was a competitive bid process. Obviously, they won. That's a great thing. You know, we should commend them for that, obviously, the City Attorney's Office. My biggest issue, and the reason why I drafted a letter asking a number of questions, my biggest issue, members, is when you're looking at a dollar amount of the kind that we've seen, 18 to 20 million dollars. In this case, a 7.5 million dollar contract extension for three years instead of a $2 million contract extension for a year. And, you know, we need more oversight. And my belief is that after answering these questions, in fact, in preliminary conversations with both the CLA and the CAO, we're gonna have to come and put together control mechanisms and better accountability here. And this isn't a finger-pointing exercise. All of us are responsible. Every member of the City Council, all of the committee members that have these matters before us, the City Attorney's Office, the mayor's office, the mayor's office, and if we don't, I think, learning about some of these issues, don't put together some control mechanisms, some efforts to reduce costs wherever possible, shame on us. And that was my reason for deferring the matter, and why I am offering a motion to the DWP, so we can continue to explore this issue and ask these questions.
Excuse me, Mr. Viera-Gosa, is that also to disapprove this and send it to DWP?
Yes.
Mr. Cardenas?
The motion before us to move this item back to DWP, correct?
That was clarified, right. Not approved today, it goes back to the department.
I want to, and I appreciate your answer to the question regarding whether or not the rate could be better, or this law firm would be willing to negotiate the rate down or what have you. These are some of the questions that we asked in committee, and I've asked of DWP on various issues. Is this firm, is it one of the best in the business?
Actually, this firm is, and if I can comment briefly, this firm is a quantum leap better than the firm that we previously had. This firm has incredible depth in FERC. It also has a lot of diversity, which we didn't have in the prior firms. Specifically, one of the lead attorneys is Pat Godley, who used to be the, I don't know if it was an undersecretary, but she was in the Energy Division of the Clinton Administration. Also, if I can tell you, this contract's been a big success for us in other regards, because what we did is...
This isn't just a one-issue contract, correct?
Well, this is an organization that's protecting our interests in Washington on various issues relative to FERC. Is that correct? Correct. But also, it's been a success, because what happened in the past is, we used to have a large firm with a smaller firm, and that firm was a minority firm that was not getting work. What we did was, we split out the contracts. When we did it, we hired a small firm independently, so that we could directly funnel work to them. And I can show you the numbers. The firm previously was getting in the range of 7,000 to 17,000 a year. In the first year that we split it out, they received $100,000 in legitimate work. In the next year, they received over $200,000 in legitimate work. So this firm gives us better representation. The rates are actually lower than the loss of other firms, and it's helped us in diversity.
What's the rate of return on their success when it comes to benefiting the Department of Water and Power? Angelenos, basically. I mean, are we talking about protecting the interest of a few million dollars, tens of million dollars, potentially hundreds of million dollars or more?
Billions of dollars. I mean, in essence, the issue...
What was that? Millions of dollars? Billions?
Yes, because in essence, the decisions that FERC is considering today, under the regulatory aspect of combining all the transmission systems throughout the West or the Midwest and the RTO model, it will affect, basically, involves back to the issue of controlling your own resources for the benefit of the city, pulling those resources for utilization throughout many systems and regional approaches that not necessarily benefit our city in the long run.
Hold on, I need to ask you a question regarding that. Can FERC affect our ability to... My understanding, DWP has something that other people either admire, and we're certainly proud of. We have an extensive transmission line system, don't we?
That's correct.
Which is essential to not only producing energy, but getting it to the people who need to flick on their light or run an operating room in a hospital or what have you. Can FERC affect that? And if they can, is this firm helping defend that they do not affect us in an adverse way on those assets?
The answer is yes. They do, the issue of having the control of the transmission lines is one of the key elements that is being debated in Washington DC under federal regulation in the Federal Power Act and several bills.
Now, wait a minute. When you say it's being debated, is that a fancy way of saying that they could just make a decision and it could cost us a lot of either money, or it could actually hurt our Angelenos' ability to turn on the light when they need it?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, you were gonna say?
No, I was just gonna say that, just to give an example of scale, we have one particular issue on one transmission line where Edison is seeking to pass on costs to us of $1 million per month, and we're fighting that. $1 million per month, that's $12 million per year, times the life of that line, say, 20, 30 years, that's, you know, $243, 60 million worth of money. And that's just on one transmission line.
Just one transmission line?
Also, I would like to say, I know it's your time, but the bills would be higher, but my staff, Marcia Kamine, who you've seen here, and also Fay Chu, who's not here, who's a transmission person, have put in a lot of time, and we're very cognizant in trying to reduce costs. We try to have people look at Expedia before they take flights, look for lowest cost hotels. We are cost-conscious. And just in the last instance that you heard about, it was estimated, you heard by Ms. Kamine, that it could have been a $90 million potential hit had we been found to have violated the last part of the investigation, which had to do with anomalous market behavior.
Thank you very much. One thing that we need to understand here in Los Angeles, whether it's Sacramento or Washington, in Sacramento, Los Angeles is a big target. We don't necessarily get much favor by the attitudes going on up there, quite frankly. When it comes to Washington, there's a saying out there that says, "Anybody but California." There's a bias toward our state. I'm not saying that we should act like victims or what have you, but whenever we know these truths and realities that are prevailing upon people and minds and policymakers, we need to make sure that we do hire the best of the best. And in this particular case, in committee, I was convinced that we did hire the best of the best, and I was convinced in committee that we are in fact involved in an expensive contract, but an appropriately fine-tuned contract that actually merits those kinds of dollars. And also, I'd like to say to Antonio Viera-Gosa, thank you so much for clarifying that this issue that you brought up isn't about pointing fingers or what have you. It is about just trying to make sure that we are fine-tuning our ability to protect our coffers, whether it be DWP or any other department in the city. So thank you very much, and I always appreciate the opportunity to bring the issues that are happening in Commerce Committee and have that dialogue and full view of all the Angelenos who take the time to tune in and listen to our issues. And I certainly agree that we should send this back to DWP now that we've had some major changes and what's going on in Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Viera-Gosa.
Yes, I too want to thank Chairman Cardenas for those questions. And just re-clarify, the issue has never been, this was one example of a contract that I believe was excessive and should have had more scrutiny. And I think it starts with the department, frankly. I think it starts with all of the city entities involved, including the full council. This isn't a matter just of this specific contract. And as Mr. Cardenas says very well, we were looking at billions of dollars of liability and the idea that we'd want to get the best lawyers possible. This was competitively bid, and Van Ness won that bid. The issue here is, we have every responsibility to institute and implement mechanisms for control and accountability for every contract, including these. And by the department's own admission, this shouldn't be a three-year contract at 7.5 million dollars, period. And that being the case, I would urge the council to disapprove the Board of Water and Power Commission's nurse resolution to propose a fourth amendment agreement with Van Ness and refer this matter back to the Department of Water and Power. And urge your high vote.
That motion is before us. Any... Mr. Padilla?
Just one quick question. Because I'm not a lawyer, I don't always know how these things work. We just won a lawsuit, right? We just won a lawsuit. So do we or do we not get reimbursed for legal fees? No. United States, different type of case? No. Sun cost.
Good question. All right, we do have the motion. We do have the motion before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Thirteen ayes. That is approved. It will return to Water and Power with the suggestions that Mr. Viera-Gosa made about bringing back a one-year contract and attempt to negotiate a lower fee. Expect to have something brought back to us by Water and Power as soon as possible. Next item? Next item, Madam President. Item number 32, called special by Councilmember Smith. Mr. Smith, item 32.
Yes, I don't wish to speak on it, I just want to have an opportunity to vote no.
All right, that matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
That matter is approved. What remains on the desk? There is a special meeting that's still on the desk. Madam President, do you wish to recess this meeting temporarily and go into the special meeting? Let's recess this and go into the special meeting. Call the roll. Cardenas, Garcetti, Gohan, LeBons, LeBons, Kowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viera-Gosa, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, 12 members present. And a quorum, Madam President. All right, what is before us? There are two closed session items that are before the council on the special meeting. And do you wish to take those up during the regular meeting? Yes, let's continue those to the regular meeting agenda and their closed session, uh, close special agenda and return to the regular agenda. Okay. On the regular agenda, Madam President, council has motions for posting and referral. They are posted and referred? There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused June 8th, 9th, and 11th for city business. That means council policy. Ms. Perry is excused on those dates. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, May 28th to arrive at 10:45 for city business. A motion is required. Ms. Hahn moves. Ms. Perry seconds. Mr. Garcetti is excused. And that clears the desk for closed session. All right, what I... Members, we are now preparing to go into closed session. We have four items, including one that may be lengthy. Mr. Viera-Gosa was excused temporarily, so we are down to 11 members. Can I please ask everyone to stay and be attentive to the four items that will be for us in closed session? Everyone who is not required to be in the council chambers, please vacate the council chambers so that we can go into our closed session items. Are back in session, and we have lost a quorum, and the council is adjourned.